I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of August 18th, 2015. Tonight, after the City Council addresses a number of business items, the evening following Agenda Item Number Five, we will be convening a joint City Council and Planning Commission Meeting, and then we will be asking all Planning Commissioners to join us at the dais. So let's begin tonight's meeting. Oh, I have one more announcement. Staff has arranged for Spanish translation services this evening. Is anyone interested in using this service? If so, you can see Jose. Jose where? There he is. Jose at the back of the room. Thank you. Okay, so let's begin tonight's meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Xenica?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. The first order of business this evening is the Police Department's Volunteer of the Month. Councilmember O'Rourke will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. This is for the Volunteer of the Month of Santa Maria Police Department. And let me give you a little bit of background. We're here to recognize Penny Pinaqua. I believe I said that right. Pa-nee-awa. Okay. I'll try to keep that straight. The other Penny's in there, or Terry's in here. I'm sorry, Terry. Anyway, Terry has been a Santa Maria City Police Department volunteer since 2006. Within her nine years of city service, she has logged approximately 800 hours of volunteer time. Terry originally started at the Department's Records Bureau, and that is where she has continued her assistance. The amazing thing about Terry is that she started her volunteering back in 2006 on top of a full-time job. Terry would come in at night and assist the Records Bureau with filing and scanning of reports, shredding, and whatever else needed to be done. When our Records Bureau dropped the night shift and only offered days, Terry couldn't volunteer as much as she wanted because she had a full-time job during the day. With that, she has offered to come in on weekends to do whatever was needed. She has always been willing to put up the extra effort to assist the Police Department with whatever needs to be done. She continues to volunteer during the evenings and weekend hours, putting after putting in a full day's work. Our city would not be more fortunate to have a volunteer like Terry. The City of Santa Maria Police Department thanks Terry for her continued dedication and commitment to serving our community. On behalf of her full-time job at the Chamber of Commerce and her volunteerism for the Police Department, the citizens and visitors of Santa Maria are lucky to have her on our side. And so, Terry, come on down.
I just want to say thank you for honoring me, and hopefully I'm not too loud. And I do it because I enjoy what I do, and I hope that everybody finds something to give back to their community, whether it be at the animal shelter, or the homeless shelter, or anything. But just give your time, because the more of us to do that, the better community we have. So, thank you.
Great work, Terry.
Terry, I thought that was somebody else they were talking about. I thought, but she works all day. Where did she find the time to do all this? But thank you so much. Appreciate it. Chief Martin, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
Thank you, Terry. Terry actually represents a significant number of volunteers that we have at the station, and we simply couldn't do it without. I think the number is several thousands of hours of volunteerism that we have. And I always hearken back to St. Francis of Assisi. It is in giving that we receive, and you epitomize that. So thank you, Terry, very much.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on to the next presentation, I would like to announce that anyone wishing to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda that is viewing this meeting from the City Council Chambers, to please submit your request to speak form to the staff member present in the council chambers at this time. And after the next presentation, you should start to come over to Shepherd Hall so we can hear from you immediately following this next presentation. And Madam Clerk, we have, you said five over there?
We have no speakers over there.
No speakers over there, okay. So the next item is a proclamation recognizing ovarian cancer awareness month, and I will be making that presentation. Whereas ovarian cancer is a serious threat to a woman's health, and whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, ovarian cancer is the fifth most common cause of fatal cancer in women in the United States. And whereas, unfortunately, many women who suffer from this cancer are not diagnosed until it has become very advanced because there's no early screening test, and symptoms may be easily confused with other diseases. And whereas, increased awareness of the symptoms and risk factors of ovarian cancer will enhance chances of early detection and thereby survival from the disease. And whereas, ovarian cancer research will continue to help develop reliable diagnostics, better therapeutics, prevention strategies to prevent this disease. And whereas, through public awareness, the City of Santa Maria seeks to minimize the devastating effects of ovarian cancer. Now therefore, I, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize September 2015 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and urge all the residents of the city to organize of this, I'm sorry, cognizance of this, and participate fittingly in its observance. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and caused a seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto this 18th day of August 2015. And here to receive this proclamation is Christina Martin Cinco.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Employees, dignitaries, ladies and gentlemen. I feel very privileged to be here again this evening to recognize, along with the city, that September is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. I feel honored, and I honor today all of the women who have lost the battle to the disease, those currently going to treatment now, and all of the survivors. Like Alice said, this is the fifth leading cause of death in women. The symptoms mimic many other diseases, and therefore, women are not diagnosed until very later in the disease. Twenty-four thousand women will be affected by this disease this year, and fourteen thousand of them will die. So that's why this is so important. Again, thank you so much. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Christina. Ms. Xenica.
Yeah, I just wanted you to share maybe what, since we know that if it's diagnosed early, the survival rate is much higher, and you have this public opportunity, maybe just share what some of the symptoms are that women should be watching for?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
Sure. Like I said, the symptoms do mimic many other conditions, and normally, women are sent to gastroenterologists and other doctors, and after having so many tests that come up negative, they still continue to have the symptoms, and therefore, the disease is found late in life. One of the symptoms is bloating, abdominal or pelvic pain, frequent urination, and also feeling full after eating very little. So again, these, you know, probably many people in this room have had these symptoms over, you know, some course in your life. And the thing is, is if you have these symptoms and they persist for longer than a couple of weeks, please see your doctor, please ask to have tests done, and be your best advocate for your own health. That's so important. I can't stress that enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on council agenda matters not printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other public speakers will be allowed to submit a request form.
Thank you. And we have how many requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have four requests to speak here from Shepherd Hall and none from the councils.
Okay, thank you. So there'll be no requests to speak taken after this. And Madam Clerk, could you please set the timer for three minutes? And I have Debbie Warren, followed by Diane Lappin, followed by Maricela Morales, followed by Ann McCurdy. Debbie Warren? Good evening, Ms. Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and City Council Members. I'm sure you know who I am. We're here about the fireworks issue again. And as we promised, we aren't going away. We'd like to see this on the agenda. As of this weekend, we were still dealing with illegal fireworks being shot off in multiple areas of Orchid and Santa Maria. We really like to see this put on the agenda. It's become such an issue that we ended up starting a second Facebook page, and our 941 members from our animal page are now moving to the fireworks page. This has really got to get on the agenda, and we need to address it somehow, some way. We would love to be able to work with anybody who's willing to work with us at this point. The other thing that has come to our attention is that the city mayor's comment in the Santa Maria Times about this being an emotional issue has certainly ignited the citizens. I'm not quite sure what he means by emotional. Would love to hear an explanation of it. It is an emotional issue for people who own animals, but it is also an emotional issue for veterans who suffer with PTSD, for children and adults that both suffer with autism. The average citizen is sleep deprived at this point because they're going off at all hours of the night. There is no clue to when they will go off. Yes, we still have animals that are missing right now due to the fireworks. We have people having to make a decision. Do I go pay the high fees at Animal Control to redeem my dog, or do I put food on the table for my children tonight? There are so many animals that have been left at the shelter because people just can't afford the fees to get them out. So we're pleading with you guys. If you would do anything, contact us. Anything that we can do. We're here to help. We know that the police are trying everything they can. Maybe they need some assistance from the citizens. I don't know. Form a committee. We'll jump on board. We're happy to help. People are calling 911 and being chewed out and criticized for calling 911, abuse of the emergency number. So if there's another number that somebody's willing to give, we'd be happy to have the citizens do that. But we're asking for some help and restore our community to where it should be. People are literally laughing at this situation, that it's not under control when it is in other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren. And, you know, we're not ignoring you. Mr. Hayden, would you like to comment on the fireworks issue, where we are?
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the council. I will kindly reserve my comments until the end of the public comment session, just in case anyone else has any comments regarding fireworks.
Diane Lappin?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm basically, excuse me, I'm basically here to report my neighbor's backyard and garage as a fire hazard, and they're in violation of many other Santa Maria municipal codes. The owner, Angeline Freesha, abandoned her house two years ago, and she's been residing in a Royal Grand Care Center since July 22nd, 2013, and is in default of her reverse mortgage. The house is in a loan due process at this point, and foreclosure is on its way, probably about five or six more months from now. I contacted Code Compliance on June 30th, 2015, and Michelle Tassif, I think is her name, was assigned to the case. After a month, I noticed that nothing was being done, so I called Michelle. And when I called her, I was basically told that the situation was taken care of, and that the information that I was requesting of what's going on was none of my business. But nothing has still been done, and it's six weeks, and there's a fire hazard. They sit over there, we have squatters sitting over there right now that smoke cigarettes. They've got the backyard full of crap, like you wouldn't believe. You name it, it's in their backyard, including a lawnmower that probably has gasoline in it, cardboard. They have mirrors hanging, little glass mirrors that reflect off the side onto the cardboard, and with this heat, I'm afraid their house is going to start on fire. Now, I did call the mortgage company, her reverse mortgage company, because I got a piece of paper that came out in 2013 when they were, the last time I went to Code Compliance to have her feces and all the mattresses and everything that were in her backyard taken care of. I really would like some help. I know at this point that the 90-year-old lady cannot clean up her house, and on top of that, she's already defaulted on her reverse mortgage. They're taking the house back over. But in the cleanup process, her son Kenneth, he's neither willing nor he doesn't want to have any incentive, he doesn't have any incentive in even cleaning it up because she used all the equity in her house, big lump sum, when the houses were really high, and all her money's gone. So he's not, and the squatters, Brenda Miller and David, her boyfriend, and whoever else that keeps on coming in and out of that house, they're not going to clean it up. So what I'm asking basically today, and this is to sum it up, is can you help us? We have a fire hazard in this house, 118 Riverside Court. And I live next door to it, and I love my house. I've been there 17 years, and my loan is almost paid, and I don't want my house to go up in flames. And I'm getting tired of the drug addicts and the fire hazard and all the baloney that's going on in that stupid house. And we've got six more months or less until the process of loan due is done. And in the meantime, we need somebody of authority. I called NOVAD, who's the new company, it used to be Deval, and now it's N-O-V-A-D, NOVAD. And they said that if Code Compliance or somebody of authority in this county would call them or the city, they'd be more than happy to cooperate with cleaning up this junk.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lappin.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cinco, would you like to get with Ms. Lappin?
Yes, I have her contact information.
You do?
Yes. And I will speak with Officer Tassif tomorrow and follow up with Ms. Lappin as necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. Maricela Morales?
I have copies of my statement for the mayor and council. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Maricela Morales, and I am Executive Director of CAWS and the CAWS Action Fund as of June 1st, 2015. I had been looking forward to coming to the Santa Maria City Council Meeting to introduce myself and take the opportunity to highlight our recent collaboration involving our CAWS Youth Committee and the city on a project to promote recycling at public parks. It is with a heavy heart that instead, the focus of my remarks are regarding the horrendous rape and killing of a woman in Santa Maria. It is understandable that in the face of such unimaginable violence, people, including public leaders, would aim at something to try and make sense of unspeakable violence, to try to hold on to something that provides some sense of control when shocked by such abhorrent violence. While it can be understandable to focus on some outlying characteristic of the accused, it is at best problematic and at worst dangerous. Violence against women is violence against women. No one in their right mind condones violence against women. The National Institute of Justice notes that 60% of reported rape and sexual assault against women is perpetrated by a relative, an intimate partner, including spouse, a friend, or an acquaintance. 60%. The American Psychological Association Task Force on Male Violence Against Women documents that violence has multiple causes, but it remains fundamentally a learned behavior that is shaped by norms and role expectations that perpetuate male violence. The APA published the report, "No Safe Haven: Male Violence Against Women at Home, At Work, and in the Community." To focus on the fact that the common factor in violence against women is unfortunately a gender issue. Men, rich men, poor men, men of color, white men, citizen men, non-citizen men, married men, single men. It's men. It is sad, frightening, and overwhelming to face the fact that the common denominator in violence against women is that the perpetrators are male, and they are overwhelmingly men we know and often know intimately. To focus on some random issue other than the common denominator of gender might be understandable in the immediate shock of horrific violence, but it is not defensible if one is actually concerned about stopping violence against women. If you are a woman, if you have a mom, a wife, a sister, a daughter, if women matter at all, then a task force to end male violence against women is a beginning. Any other focus is moral outrage and fear at best. I value women, and I want to end violence against women. I urge you to initiate a task force to end male violence against women. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Next speaker is Ann McCurdy.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the city council. As Maricela said, on July 24th, a woman was brutally beaten and raped in her home. On the same day in Santa Maria, statistically speaking, nine other women were raped. Those women did not necessarily report, and those rapes did not necessarily make it on the news, but they happened. Sadly, this case has garnered national attention because Marilyn Ferris's life has been tossed around like a political football. The North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center finds this incredibly disturbing because many groups are using Marilyn's life as a way to advance an agenda. The center is not a political organization, and our agenda is simple. Violence in our community must end. Each person in this community needs to take a step back and examine what the real issue is here. It's not immigration, it's not status, it's not race, it is violence. Violence has permeated our community on a level that has angered us. Good, I'm glad people are angry, but that anger is misdirected and is taking away from the very thing that we as a community should be focused on, that a woman was raped in her home as she slept. Rape is about power and control, and as a community, we should be raising our fists, screaming at the top of our lungs, "No more." Would our conversations be different if the person who had raped her had been Asian or Native American or African American or Anglo? Think about that for a moment. Day in and day out, women, girls, boys, and men are sexually assaulted. Where's the outrage in that? "No more." But because one group or another has politicized this issue, it becomes not about Marilyn being raped and murdered, but an immigrant being in our country illegally. If we want to point fingers as to what went wrong, there are only two people that need to be pointed at, and those are the rapists. Sadly, Marilyn's life is being used as a springboard to advance agendas and point fingers in the wrong direction. Her life mattered. She mattered. What matters is that, as a community, we address the issues of violence. What matters is that we support our law enforcement agencies and quit blaming them and everyone else for what went wrong. By my calculations, the Santa Maria Police Department did all that they could. And on the day that Marilyn was raped, they did everything right. Their response was compassionate, swift, and well-oiled. They caught the perpetrator and they investigated vigorously until the second perpetrator was apprehended as well. Truth be told, the Santa Maria Police Department is doing the best they can with the resources they have, and they aren't to blame for what happened to Marilyn. Let's refocus as a community and put blame where it belongs, on the animals that raped a woman. As a community, we owe Marilyn respect. She lived her life as a woman of peace. We need to remember that, honor that, and be mindful of the fact that using her life as a way to polarize our community is disgraceful. And just so everybody knows, the Rape Crisis Center invites you and anyone else to attend a vigil in Marilyn's honor Friday night, August 21st, at 7:30 in the City Hall Courtyard. We will remember Marilyn for the peaceful way she lived her passionate life.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, comments?
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. To address Ms. Warren's comments, the city staff has met internally to discuss the firework issue. It was problematic to try to get everybody in the city departments that we needed to contact at that meeting because of it being in summer months and vacations and conflicting schedules. We assigned them all duties and responsibilities to go out and seek information. We're going to be having another meeting among city staff to try to find out what are some of the best management practices that other cities are trying to utilize right now to deter the use of fireworks. When we have that other meeting, once we formulate a game plan to address fireworks for next year, we will be inviting Ms. Warren and some of the previous speakers that have spoken at previous city council meetings. We do have their information to our staff meeting so we can explain to them some of the difficulties that we've had in trying to do enforcement in the past, and talk to them about some anticipated game plans that we have to try to mitigate the use of illegal fireworks in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one other thing, we will be bringing this back before the city council.
Thank you. And did you want to introduce Mr. Springer regarding the water conservation update?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Yes, I'd like to introduce our Utilities Director, Mr. Springer. At the second meeting of every council, second meeting of the month at every council meeting, at the end of the public comment session, we will be giving a brief overview of the city's conservation efforts as far as water is concerned. And so we've asked Mr. Springer to do that this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Springer?
Madam Mayor and council members, I will very briefly go over how we did with our conservation efforts for the month of July. As you may recall, last month, I came forward and gave a very large presentation on what the requirements were for the mandatory requirements through the state. Tonight, just basically giving a brief overview on how the community did. So, once again, I have the super complicated chart that I like. Basically, you can see in June, at this point, we were just above our 16% requirement. In July, our conservation efforts actually accelerated a little bit. The black line is well above the yellow line. So you can see that we achieved beyond our minimum conservation requirement of 16%. We were actually at, this is a pretty simple chart, we were actually at 21% savings this year for the month of July. So basically, once again, at the month of July, the water line, if it's above the month for right there, we are above the savings that we need to have for the month. So I want to basically say that the community is doing a great job at conserving water, and the city is meeting its mandatory conservation efforts as required by the state.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Before we move on to the consent agenda, I want to take time to clarify an issue. I want to go on record now and indicate that the City of Santa Maria is not a sanctuary city, and that we have never taken any action to become a sanctuary city, nor has the City Council approved any resolution, ordinance, or administrative policy to warrant our listing as a sanctuary city. And again, I will reserve any further remarks regarding this issue during oral reports of council members. But we've seen in the newspapers, and we've heard from people saying that Santa Maria is a sanctuary city. We do not fit the definition of a sanctuary city. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rule call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Mr. Boyson? Mr. O'Rourke?
No, I don't have any.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have just pulled item G for me.
G, Ms. Zuniga?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go to item G.
Edit. Edit. I believe they have a conflict under the warrant. That's it, the G warrant. It's still far down from there, sorry, it's usually a fire.
Okay, you're going to abstain from?
From item G.
From item G?
Yeah.
Okay. And I would like to pull item C. And item C is a recommendation of city staff that the City Council adopt a resolution canceling the September 1st, 2015 regular meeting due to lack of agenda items. And then item L, which is a recommendation of city staff that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the notice of contract. It's a completion forbid number 2013/05 with the Santa Maria Police Department Tenant Improvements. We will be going into the third phase of our tenant improvements, which will move dispatch over to our new police station off of Federavia and Flosser, and that should be done after the first of the year, which is a 72,000 square foot facility. Yes, Ms. Waterfield?
And I need to pull L and G for the same reason as G.
Did you, oh, okay. Okay, so L, M, and G, you are, you have to abstain.
I abstain.
Okay. L, M, and G, okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented with the exception, are you asking for C to not be discussed?
No, I was just bringing up C.
With the exclusion of L, M, and G.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? The others in favor?
Aye.
I need to see.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, now I'll move for the adoption of consent calendar items L, M, and G. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Haring Nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for Chapel Street Car Wash to allow renovation of an existing self-serve car wash on a 0.3 acre site in the Bungalow District of the Downtown Pacific Plan located at 309 East Chapel Street.
Staff report is to be made by the Community Development Director, Mr. Offill.
Hey, Madam Mayor, council members, we have a short presentation this evening. This is the Jordans' East Chapel Car Wash Project that we're bringing back to you. The second slide.
Didn't you guys practice today?
We practiced all afternoon. This is embarrassing. We really did work on this. It's the new technology. We had a day of training of PowerPoint, and we thought we were going to all be experts on this, so. Can we just hit the air and board? It's not working either.
Sorry, why don't you just go through your slides?
Okay, well, maybe real quickly, if Peter can find it for us. All right, I'm going ahead. The next slide is an aerial, which you've seen before, showing the car wash on East Chapel between Miller and Vine. Okay, no, it's not. And then we had pictures of the existing car wash, two of them, and then we have the proposed design. The project components include a 14,000 square foot lot, which will have the new structure on it, which is 2,300 square feet, about 11,000 square feet of paving and landscaping, which has been improved with the addition of a few more trees on the site, and the building style is going from the Quonset hut to a California Mission style with clay roof tiles. From a planning timeline standpoint, remember, the ordinance came to you back in June last year. Your council initiated it on June 3rd, and then the very next day, staff opened up a case to start processing that ordinance. We brought it to the Planning Commission in July, and then we had the first reading with council in August, completing it in October. The CUP was submitted seven months later, in May of this year. June 1st, the project was deemed complete. And July 1st, we scheduled it to the Planning Commission, but we had a problem with the postal service not accepting our notices, which we had been doing the same way for many, many years, and so that delayed it for a two-week period. So the Planning Commission reviewed the project on July 15th and made recommendations to your council. So our recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation is that you approve U 2015-11 by adopting Resolution 2015-83. That completes my presentation. And the Jordans are here this evening.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, we have no written correspondence.
Mr. Offill, is the applicant here with us this evening?
Yes, they're in the audience. Uh-huh.
Would you like to make any comments?
They said they were happy to be here.
Yes, please.
You know you're going to have to talk, huh?
Good evening. I would just like to offer appreciation for the city to allow us to redo this building. It's 50 years old. We have been working with the city for almost two years to get to this point, and we're thrilled with the new building. I think that the city will like it too. It's similar to so many things around here. I would especially like to thank David Cross and the Chamber of Commerce for helping us. We are laypeople. When it comes to this kind of thing, we were confused, frustrated, angry, and everything else, but the chamber and David and many of you on the council really helped us to get through it. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
I have one request to speak.
In favor or opposition?
In favor.
In favor, okay. Dave Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and the Planning Commission. Dave Cross, Economic Development Director at the Chamber of Commerce, and first of all, I want to congratulate Greg and Sherri Jordan for being willing to invest in their business, invest in their property, and invest in the downtown, and hopefully we'll have a lot more businesses that'll come forward and do what they're doing. So I'd like to congratulate them on that, but also, as Sherri said, city staff was great on this, community development and public works in particular, so they should be acknowledged with helping the Jordans through this. And third of all, the chamber supports this project because anything we can do for the downtown, one step at a time, to improve it, we're all for, and this is a good step. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I would just like to echo Mr. Cross's comments towards the Jordans. Greg and Sherri, thank you very much for staying with us. I know when you first came in and wanted to do this renovation of your car wash, you thought that this was going to be just embraced by the city and then find out that, jeez, you have a non-conforming use and it doesn't work, and sometimes bureaucracy does move slowly, but hopefully it moves in the right direction. In this case, I think we've finally come to a good conclusion, and so thank you for sticking with us.
May I make a comment?
Mr. O'Rourke?
Okay, just, I don't know how many, well, some of you are old, some of you aren't, but the Quonset hut issue of their location in Arizona, where I came from, in the '40s, when the GIs were coming back from World War II, attending the University of Arizona, they lived in Quonset huts, all stacked acres and acres and acres, and it's kind of like, this is, it says from the '70s, but I have a feeling those huts were from the '40s, actually, initially. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you.
Sure. If I may, Madam Mayor, with that, I would move for the passage for Resolution Number 2015-83, which approves the conditional use permit for the East Chapel Car Wash U 2015-11.
I'll second. There's been a motion and second on the floor to adopt Resolution Number 2015-83. Is there any further discussion? Haring Nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule? Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Congratulations, you finally made it. The next item of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of 2014-15.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Vizet. I hope you're better on the laptop than Mr. Offill is.
Oh, you're not.
Oh, you're not?
So I guess that would be a yes.
I know, I saw him earlier, so I know he said he was going to practice. He was going to practice on this today, so I know he did, but anyway. Mr. Vizet?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, and the public. Tonight, I'll briefly go over the fourth quarter financial report for the June 30th fiscal year ending. And one thing about this financial report is that these are not audited numbers and do not include the usual year-end adjustments such as revenue and expenditure accruals. It does give a good general picture of the city's financial status at June 30th, though. The beginning fund balance of $10,099,000 at 7/114 is the audited fund balance of the General Fund. Through the end of the fiscal year, sales tax receipts are 1.1 million greater than received last fiscal year. Gains in auto sales, general consumer goods, restaurant sales, and billing and construction are the categories showing the most increased revenue. However, this is partially offset by declines in sales tax from fuel and service stations due to declining gas values. Property tax revenue is about $567,000 greater than last fiscal year also, due to increasing property values and improving economy. At June 30th, the median home price was $311,000 versus $280,000 last fiscal year at June 30th. In this fiscal year, 1516, we're projecting property tax revenue to come in about $16 NHIS revenue is coming in much more than anticipated. Through June, the city received about $2.9 million, and with revenue accruals, about $3.1 million at the end of June 30th. This is primarily due to oil companies increasing their excavation of sites. The improving economy and land values have encouraged oil companies to clean up their contaminated sites, resulting in large increase in NHIS revenue for the fiscal year. But it's once again important to remember that about five years ago, we got $5.5 million in this revenue source, so it has been declining, and it's not a permanent revenue source for the General Fund. A declining revenue source, as we have mentioned in the past, is interest income. We have received about $530,000 in the current fiscal year, and we project about $500,000 in 1516 also, whereas back in '07-'08, we got about $3.2 million in interest income. And while the city's return on investments are better than the two-year treasury yields, declining interest income is a result of the extremely low interest rate environment we're in right now and the decline in cash balances in both the city's General Fund, LEAF Fund, and General Capital Projects Fund. The interest income earned by all these funds is credit to the General Fund. The LEAF Fund cash balance has declined from $11.7 million at '07-'08 to the current $6.3 million, and the General Capital Projects Fund has declined from $14.4 million to 2010-11 to the current $5 million. It was primarily used for the police building reconstruction. Permit revenue is doing very well also, at $2.7 million or 122% of budget versus $2.3 million at June 30th of 2014. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the fourth quarter at 107% of budget at $4,177,000. So we're finally receiving the estimated amount we first anticipated back in 2012. Expenditures are at 97.1%. The police department is under budget primarily because of vacancies, primarily the police commander and one police officer partially during the year. Overall, through the fourth quarter, approximately 91% of all Measure U-related tax revenue was spent on police and fire, with 47% spent on fire and 44% spent on police operations. As for the enterprise funds, for the water and wastewater fund revenues, we're in excess of expenses by $4.9 million. The other revenue of $2,090,000 primarily consists of $754,000 in state water reimbursement fees paid by developers, and $427,000 rents and concessions from agricultural lease, and $402,000 from the State Proposition 84 grant. Expenditures include the annual debt service payment of $4.6 million on the 2012 refunding bonds. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.1 million. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vizet. Any questions from the council?
I have a comment to make.
Ms. Waterfield?
I noticed that the unemployment rate is down too in Santa Maria, to 5.7%?
Yes, as of the end of June.
Wow, that's pretty nice.
Yes, a few years ago, it was close to 15%.
Absolutely.
It was doing great.
Yeah, so that's one thing that really needs to be pointed out. Good.
Mr. Boyson?
If I may, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Vizet, it seems like ever since I've been on the council, all I've heard about is the structural deficit each year and how we're making it up with LEAF funds and this sort of thing. It sounds like we actually have a structural surplus in our General Fund this year, and when all is said and done, what would you anticipate that surplus to be?
Right now, we're about $1.55 million with revenues over expenditures for the fiscal year, and by the time the accruals are all done and said, by June 30th, when the cap was prepared at the end of December, all the revenue accruals are in and expenditure accruals, I think we're going to be around $2 to $2.5 million with revenues over expenditures.
What did it turn around over the last few years?
Yes. I have to say this, revenue is clicking right now. It's moving on all four, eight cylinders. I have a four-cylinder car, that's what it is for.
You need a new car.
Yeah, I need a new car, exactly right. You know, but I do want to say a couple of things. There are some headwinds on the horizon, okay? You know, NHIS is clicking right now, $3 million, but it's not a permanent revenue source, all right? When the contaminated areas are all cleaned up and the landfill is full with this contaminated soil as a cap, well, you know, the revenue source is going to be declining dramatically, all right? The other thing is, I think it's important to keep in mind that in six years, Measure U is going to expire, all right? And it's in December of 2021. We get $4.2 million now, by then it should be close to $5 million. That's going to leave a $5 million gap in the General Fund, a big hole we have to plug in six years. Six years goes by pretty fast. The other thing is, we've been through six years of expansion now, albeit it's been a slow expansion to moderate, all right? I've been reading recessions right around the corner, lurking around the corner. Who knows what will trigger that and the severity of that recession? When the Great Recession hit six, seven years ago, our sales tax, excuse me, declined by $4 million over a two-year period, '08-'09 and '09-'10. That's 20% of our sales tax revenue. So while things are looking up right now, we've got to be wary of these headwinds coming up and be cautious in our spending. The other thing is the state. The state is clicking right now, too. They, you gotta remember, they passed Proposition 30 three years ago for a quarter percent increase in sales tax and the increase in personal income tax, and the increase in the use tax of a quarter percent expires at the end of 2016, all right? And three years later is when the increase in personal income tax expires. And the state, who knows what's going to happen at that point? They've had two straight years of positive cash balance in the General Fund, which is a wonderful thing. How long they can keep that up, we don't know. So, but when the state has problems, we have problems because they come after us. So, but when the state has problems, we have problems, because they come after us, cities and counties, to alleviate their deficit. So those are all headwinds coming up we have to be wary of in our spending.
And Mr. Vizet, obviously, you can always find cloud in the silver lining. We certainly appreciate that.
I am a finaster, I gotta be conservative.
Mr. O'Neal.
Well, just a couple of comments. You know, I think most people read the big papers and the financial analysts, and, you know, although it looks like employment is rosy, there are a hell of a lot of people aren't working full-time or making money. There are more people, such as us older folks, who are working part-time, and even younger people, and that's why if you look at the housing starts and young people getting out of college, they're living with mom and dad because they don't have jobs and they don't have any place to go. So from that, I caution people to say, hey, it's all rosy, because I know a lot of people are saying, you know what? It ain't rosy. One question I have to ask you is on page four of your report, you have the solid waste fund, and in it, it shows that there's $360,000 in landfill closure and post-closure maintenance and blah, 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 blah.
What page was that?
On page four or five.
At the very bottom.
Four or five, at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I just asked that because that's out of the solid waste fund, but wouldn't that money come out of our post-closure reserve that we've been stacking up, which the state has said we have to do for our post-closure, or are we spending any of that?
No, I think that's to build up the closure, post-closure fund, if I'm not mistaken.
So this is coming out of the regular?
Regular solid waste fund, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll meet with you, we can discuss it.
Mr. Vizet, what do you think's gonna happen when Prop 30 is over?
Well, that's a quarter.
I mean, the state has come in and taken so much from the cities already, and I see Chief Martin nodding because they're taking from the Police Department. So what's gonna happen after Prop 30? Another Prop 30? They're gonna have to come in and get some more money from the taxpayers?
Well, they're trying to build their reserves at the state level, and, like I said, they have two, they've had two straight years of positive cash balance in their General Fund, which is a wonderful thing, because they've never had that before. They do a lot of internal borrowing among the funds they have to balance their General Fund budget. And so, you know, I mean, they had to do a lot of cutting of expenditures to balance their budget when Governor Brown took office. They had like a $26 billion deficit, and they cut it down. And so, you know, I frankly think he's done a good job in balancing the budget. What's gonna happen when that quarter cent sales tax expires? Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know. Hopefully, they have enough reserves built up where they make the cognizant, you know, strategic decision to build their reserves rather than increasing expenditures based upon these revenue sources that are gonna go away, you know, rather quickly.
They're gonna look at Prop 13.
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna do.
I noticed that in police, we have vacancies, recreation and parks, administrative services, community development, and public work, so some of our savings are coming from the vacancies we have.
Yes.
Any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the report is to be filed.
Okay, the City Council will take a five-minute recess. Anyone wishing to speak during the public input of the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and that are currently in the City Council chambers, if there's anyone in there right now, do we have people?
They may, I probably feel like they were coming over.
Oh, they're coming over, okay. So we'll take a five-minute break, and then we will come back with the joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. Five minutes. Can you hear me? Okay, could everyone please take their seats?
Yeah, people over there. Oh, that's it? Oh, okay.
Interesting.
Is everyone over here?
She says Henry Grannan is the only one over there. He doesn't want to leave.
That sounds like him.
Dale keeps stopping in to say hi. Hi, he's at her meeting, and we thought, yes. So I needed to text that and just say she's been going to go. There's a planner that's gonna stay over there.
Okay. Can I start now? Go ahead and do that, finish that, and I'll start.
One second.
Apparently, he's more comfortable over there.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask everyone to please take their seats. The City Council will reconvene to a joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here.
Councilmember, or, excuse me, Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Quigley.
Here.
And Chair Dickerson.
Here.
Our first order of business is a regular business item regarding the downtown specific plan. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will provide direction to staff regarding proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hayden, I believe you wanted to talk about the format of tonight's meeting before we turned over to Mr. Opel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. I thought, prior to making the presentation this evening, that I'd best provide an overview as to how we're gonna facilitate tonight's presentation. We're gonna start off with a staff presentation made by Mr. Apple and Mr. Gilli and Ms. Azaire. As they make their presentation, if anyone on the Planning Commission or the City Council has any questions, they want something to be clarified, please feel free to stop the staff member during their presentation and ask for any type of clarification questions. After they conclude their presentation, I would ask that any members of the Planning Commission or the City Council ask any questions of staff prior to opening it up for public input. Then we would be receiving input from members of the public. After the council and the Planning Commission receive comments from members of the public, my recommendation would then be to close the public input portion of the agenda, bring it back to the Planning Commission for their deliberations and their comments to the City Council. Once you've exhausted those, then bring it back to the City Council for deliberations and then direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. I would like to remind anyone again, if there's, the staff has arranged for Spanish translation, if anyone needs Spanish translation, so if anyone is interested in the Spanish translation. Jose, where are you? I guess he left. Okay? Okay? You can scratch that. Okay, Mr. Opel and Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers and commissioners, thank you for being open to this special joint session this evening as we continue to discuss the downtown specific plan update. Before I continue, I want to publicly recognize Peter Gilli, the Planning Division Manager, and Ned Azaire, the Project Manager, for all their hard work during this 2015 update. I can't recall the number of service organizations and groups and media presentations that they've made over the last few months, and so they've really done a great job in pulling this together. Some of you remember this plan began with a number of workshops and hearings dating back to 2004, and from that community outreach, a vision was identified, along with design, design principles. The plan was eventually adopted in 2009 and revised, 2008 and then revised in 2009, and unfortunately, due to the Great Recession, the plan did not have a major impact on the downtown. We only processed a couple downtown applications after the plan was approved, and those pointed out shortcomings and... Some of you remember this plan began with a number of workshops and hearings dating back to 2004, and from that community outreach, a vision was identified, along with design, design principles. The plan was eventually adopted in 2009 and revised, 2008 and then revised in 2009, and unfortunately, due to the Great Recession, the plan did not have a major impact on the downtown. We only processed a couple downtown applications after the plan was approved, and those pointed out shortcomings and weaknesses in the plan. So, ten months ago, staff met with you and discussed ways we could all make the plan work better. From your comments that evening, staff went back and revised the plan to be a more flexible and user-friendly document. Feedback on this draft plan has been very positive from all interest groups. Our workshop last month brought over seventy people to this room, where ninety-seven percent agreed or strongly agreed that the plan was on the right track. With continued positive feedback tonight and with Council's direction, we can move to public hearings in the coming months with the plan becoming effective by the beginning of the year. So, now I'd like to turn this over to the presentation to Mr. Gilli and Ms. Zaire, who will walk you through the revisions.
And before we go into the revisions, I would like to give you some view of the big picture of what the plan's trying to do and not trying to do. We're viewing this plan as a roadmap that's purposely not intended to detail every step we're gonna take along the way, but it is going to say, "We want to move in this direction. We want to have these elements." The idea is if we can agree upon the plan and the vision at this point, we can then move into the details at later dates, and the Council and the Commission and the public can be a part of those discussions. So, all along the way, we have input and buy-in. The alternative is trying to make a plan that has a lot of detail, which admittedly might be a description of the past plan, of the 2008 version. It had a lot of detail. For a variety of reasons, it didn't get implemented, and now we're here trying to change our direction. So, the overall theme of our presentation is going to be how this is looking at the big picture, how it's a roadmap, and not trying to detail every step. There's gonna be a lot of steps that come after adoption of the plan where we are gonna dig into details and go through and work them out.
Mr. Gilli, I have a question, if I may. In the interim, until the new plan gets adopted, how are applicants or developers and folks going to be treated? How is their plan's going to be looked at by the city until we arrive in 2016 where this plan potentially will be adopted?
Um...
Are we still stuck with the prior, prior 2008 plan? Or is it, or are we already building in some flexibility so that we can accommodate some, you know, concerns that the potential developers would have?
So, the plan that is currently in effect, the older plan, until we adopt a new one, it is still de-zoning for the downtown area. As we go through the presentation, there are a lot of things that are changing and a lot of things that are staying the same, and one of the things that are staying the same are the development options, how much you can build, how tall you can build, the types of uses and such. So, there may be some cases, if a developer wanted to come in on a property, the older plan and the newer plan would not be that much of a difference, but as we go through this, you'll see the certain areas that the strategies are different, and some of them we're gonna be able to possibly start up on before adoption and do some of the groundwork, and some of them we will have to wait until the new plan's adopted. Thank you.
Okay, diving in. As Peter was saying, this plan is meant to be a roadmap. Where are we ultimately going? What we are trying to accomplish or achieve and the direction we're taking is actually based off a lot of outreach that we did back in 2004. There was a lot of community outreach done before when the first plan was being looked at, and the community was asked, "What do you want to see downtown? What are the things you want to be doing there? What do you want to see happen?" And from that was derived a vision for the downtown. Now, we've kept that vision predominantly the same, and that vision and what the goal of the plan is, is to create a culturally rich environment that reflects the community, a safer inviting and pedestrian-oriented area, and an area with diverse entertainment opportunities. So, that vision and that goal is still the same for this plan, and everything that we're trying to do is to achieve that. Now, stepping back, how are we gonna achieve that? We took a look at, you know, what are the main ingredients to any downtown? Well, there's things to do there. There's a nice environment to do those things in, and then there's people. So, those are kind of the three main ingredients that are in every downtown, and from that we derived our three-pronged approach in the strategy we're gonna take now in seeing that vision come to life, and that is with activities, partnership, and beautification. So, starting with the activities, what we're wanting to focus on with that is to create downtown events. The primary focus of that will be to create a weekly event and to focus those events in the Town Center West parking lots. And why we're focusing them there is there's a lot of passerby traffic. People will see that there's things going on downtown. We'll get to see that there's people, there's activities, there's events, and to start changing perceptions and thoughts of downtown that on weekends or during the evenings, they would think, "Oh, I wonder what's going on downtown. I wonder if there's an event going on downtown." And so, the first step of that will be to create a weekly activity. We are looking at the idea of starting off with a weekly food truck event, and that food truck event would be on something like a Friday night. We'd get vendors to come out to the Town Center West parking lot, ten or fifteen food trucks, tables, chairs, bounce houses, bands, music, a variety of events to start creating a buzz, and that would occur every week, so people would start thinking, "Oh, Friday night, there's something going on Friday night, every Friday night." And so, as that expands and becomes something even iconic downtown and something that we're known as happening in our downtown, and eventually maybe even expanding that, we could take a look at even shutting Broadway between Main and Cook, expanding out into the street, expanding across into the mall. I mean, we could see how far we can take this, but the first thing would be get the foot traffic and the activities happening downtown. Other community events could occur, like a kids' program. We're opening it up and making it really easy for organizations to come and use our city facility downtown as a place to locate their events.
And the next major part of the strategy is with partnerships, and right now, the way our city operates, which is very much like how most of the cities are, is if you have something that you are interested in doing or applying for, you have to either know which department you want to talk to, or you have to go and try your luck, start with one department, maybe be sent to another one and to another one. And the result is, there are cases where someone may be transferred multiple times, has to repeat their story over and over, and so we want to, in the downtown, we want to change that. We want to make the downtown plan area, we want to improve customer service and clarity, and one of that, the way to do that is to have a central point of contact, and the approach is gonna be that the Planning Division would be the central point of contact. If someone has something they want to do downtown, they will come and talk to us first. We will do the behind-the-scenes work. We will go and say, and if they come to something that we know we need to talk to police, we need to talk to recor parks, and we need to talk to the attorney's office, we will go and do some of that legwork and not send the customer off on their own to each of these places. There will still be times where we are not gonna have the answer, and we're gonna, but we'll set up a meeting so that all the key players that need to be there are there. And so, the goal is to be more of a concierge-type service where a customer comes in, stops at one spot, and we're able to direct them and help them along throughout the process and stay with them each step of the way. One of the things that's also relatively normal is, once someone completes their part with a department, but they still need to talk to another department, it'll just say, "You need to talk to someone in that department." You know, here's where their location is at, here's their phone number. We want to walk with them over to that group. We wanna make sure the person in the other department knows we're coming and set it up so that, to the customer, we look like one city, because we are one city, not like a bunch of different departments. So, that is going to allow the customer to have a much better experience, a much easier time, and also allow us to be a lot more coordinated and strategic.
Peter, do you have any idea what type of added man-hours you're looking at when you're taking people from your department and actually walking them around to all the other departments?
We do expect that it will be significant, but over the last eighteen months, with the assistance of the Planning Commission, we have been able to be more efficient in a lot of things we do and save time, do the things we normally do in less time, and the point of that was to be able to put that saved time towards something that was important, and this is kind of the identified area that that's gonna go to. So, we do think it'll be a significant amount of time, but we are gonna continue to look to be as efficient with all of our work so that we can provide this service to the downtown, to a downtown customer, whether they're a business owner or an event organizer.
But realistically, it's not like you have been saving and booking the time and people have been twiddling, I know you guys just haven't been twiddling your thumbs over in your department, so how are you going to take the things that you're currently doing and filling your time and shuffle them off now? I mean, where is this saved time now?
Well, I mean, there's no question it will be a challenge, and it's, we're going to have to work hard at making sure we can fit this in, but there is also the truth that when somebody comes into the city and has a bad experience and makes a complaint, all the departments involved end up having to spend more time trying to make up for that case than they would have if we had just had a better, a front door that is more welcoming. So, in some ways, half of the time might be saved just by hopefully having, you know, less fires to put out, and the other half, we're gonna be searching for efficiencies.
Well, and I was just gonna, I was gonna suggest that, is that at the front end, customer service is probably gonna save you a lot of time at the back end and, you know, not gonna be dealing, always dealing with problems. You know, being reactive instead of proactive is always more time-consuming, so you probably have a lot of savings in time just at that.
And I might just add that I think it would be a luxurious problem if this plan is so successful that we get so many applications and we have to increase staff to accommodate them all. I'm looking forward to that request to the City Council.
So, the goal is to have the concierge-style service, and then when a business owner comes in and wants to do some work on their property, on their building, we want to set up a program that has incentives for them. This goes, ties very much into the direction that the Commission and Council provided us in October of last year, that there's a strong sense of beautifying, but we want to offer incentives and partner as opposed to imposing it. So, the concept is that if a business owner or the property owner chooses to make investments to improve the exterior, they will qualify for certain incentives. Some of the incentives will be waived or reduced fees at the planning and building stage. Others is an opportunity to have access to the facade improvement funds, and then for cases that involve impact fees, the plan is going to allow impact fees to be paid over time, over a longer period of time than would be allowed elsewhere in the city. We'd like to have more incentives, but at this point, that's the package that we can put together and meet the legal obligations of various fees, but part of this being a roadmap plan also is, we are going to continue to look at other incentives as time goes on to try to find ways to offer more, but at this point, that's the main package on incentives. So, as I said, if someone comes in, wants to upgrade their facade and give it a new paint job, update the signage, add an awning, replace windows, add landscaping, they can be eligible then to save money on fees and have access to the facade improvement funds. It will be a case-by-case approach because it will depend very much on what each person is proposing to do. Now, if someone proposes to go into an existing building and they're the same type of business, they will not be required to do any of these improvements. It's optional. We'll talk to them and describe how, if you are open to doing these things, these incentives are there, but the reality also is, the business can wait a couple years, see if they can get established, then do the investment, they would still be able to do the incentive at that point. It's not just when you move in, it's whenever you choose to invest in your property. This will not immediately change downtown. This is gonna be very incremental, but if we can get a handful of businesses in one year to update their facades, and then maybe the next year, we have another handful, over time, we'll start to notice a difference, and this component of the plan will have paid dividends.
Peter, I have a comment about that. So, a little paint goes a long way. So, the suggestion was that maybe you want to choose a color scheme for downtown that so people know when you have an event or activity, where it kind of begins, where it ends, or the different districts, and maybe that's something that the businesses would be interested in, to get a paint job which isn't too expensive, and now we have a sense of belonging to the community.
So, the partnering with the businesses for the incentives is gonna help beautify, it serves two purposes. It serves as our partnership and it also serves as part of the beautification. So, that's gonna help beautify the private realm of the downtown area, getting everyone to make their storefronts look cutesy. That leaves the public realm, and what we're going to do in attracting and making the public realm more attractive is, we're gonna look at doing a comprehensive streetscape plan. So, the streetscape is your sidewalks, your street trees, your lighting, your benches, every interface between the building and then the street. And up here on the picture, we have on the right, a picture of Main Street downtown. The framework is there. Now, on the left, we have another Main Street somewhere else in the country. Now, there isn't much difference in the bones of both of those pictures. There's still buildings, there's still sidewalks, there's still cars parked along the street. What the picture on the left has is they have an enhanced streetscape, and so we want to look at doing this everywhere in downtown, maybe at differing, varying levels depending on where downtown, but we need to take a look at the idea of really doing an upgrade to our streetscape. So, with that, we're gonna hire a consultant, an outside firm that's done this in other cities and has upgraded and improved other downtowns, to comprehensively look at our downtown, see what's existing, take an inventory of what's existing out there, and see for Santa Maria, for our downtown, what makes sense? What can we add to this downtown to upgrade it in terms of our public realm? So, in the next slide, there's another picture of Broadway and another Main Street. Again, there's street trees lacking along Broadway, some lighting and such, but with a few additions, we could really make Broadway a much more pedestrian-oriented, friendly area to walk along. Yes, there is Caltrans highway running through it, but there are ways to help mitigate that interface and make it a much more friendly environment.
Neta, and you're suggesting that the city will be the people buying into the streetscape and to create this environment for the private sector?
Yes, the city would be the lead on it. We would go out and make a plan. We've actually had conversations with Caltrans. We just met with them this week and opened up dialogue with them about the idea of doing the streetscape plan, and even Caltrans said, "Hey, we are a different organization now than we were ten years ago." Ten years ago, we would've laughed at the things that you're talking about and shot them down, but now, we understand the need for communities to have a more walkable, multimodal, meaning for pedestrians and bikes and vehicles to traverse through our highways. So, they were open to the idea and even open to grant funding opportunities for us, and so there is a lot of potential in doing this and would be one of the next steps that we would be recommending to take in implementing the downtown.
And we would really need to let the private sector know that the city will, is encouraged and does want to invest in their business to create this type of environment. So, how are you going to do that? How will you do that media blast for them?
While we, once we start the groundwork on the streetscape plan, there will be lots of public input and opportunity while we are putting that together. We plan on reaching out to the businesses and the community and having their input. You know, maybe the bike groups are gonna want... you know, maybe the bike groups are going to want in, to come in and talk about it. The streetscape plan will also incorporate art, and so the art groups will have their input on it. We want this to be a document that the community buys in on, is excited about, and is encouraged to see implement. And once that goes through that process and gets adopted, we would go out for grant funding and start implementing block by block. This aerial photo that you see is the core of downtown, kind of Main Street and Broadway in the core, and the initial idea is to go through block by block and do it, and starting right at the core, just go through and add the street trees, improve the sidewalks, add the street furniture, and make a big statement and impact right off the bat, so.
Nada, the, quick question, the consultant you're talking about hiring, is that the economic development consultant that you're, that's referenced in the plan, is that the, is that?
No, it's not. The economic development consultant would be for the retail and business regenerizing in the downtown. The streetscape plan would be like an urban designer, engineering firm that has done streetscapes, that has the urban design aspect of it that makes it look good, and then the traffic engineer aspect of how we make it interface with our streets.
And one other question, so, in essence, what's being asked is that the, is the city will be the one to do their improvements more or less first, is kind of a good faith thing to show to the businesses that we really are committed to it? I mean, obviously, if, you know, somebody comes in and starts actually doing their own thing as far as their retail store goes, we'd like to get them beautified as well, but we're kind of showing them that we're committed to this by putting this out there and beautifying these areas ahead of time in essence, is that correct?
That's the hope and goal. With Council's blessing and recommendation, the next step would be to start the groundwork and getting the streetscape plan started. Now, that's going to be a lengthy process, they'll have to, you know, survey existing conditions, we'll have to do community outreach and make sure there's lots of buy-in, work with Caltrans, but that, in our hopes, is the very next step.
Could I ask a basic question, Nada?
Sure.
The, I will say that Caltrans has been at the forefront of helping us move things along ever on Main and Broadway, but it's interesting, you know, they list the Main Street California project and things like that, and I guess, rather basic, is there someone in our region that currently is responsible for that activity? Because that's, you know, everything we're doing is up and down their corridor, and we can have as much faith and throw as much money as we want unless we've got their tacit OK. I guess that's my concern, is that, let's beat them up right now to get them to partner with us.
I'm sorry. Definitely. The three people that we met with from Caltrans are regional representatives and who we spoke with, and we're very open to the things that we were talking about and began the dialogue with them. In one of the opportunities that they did present to us was a grant source funding that would, we could partner even with them in creating the document, and they would, you know, fund some of it, and we could fund some of it and collaborate on getting that, which would be a benefit on both sides because we could have all of the dialogues in the beginning. So, we spoke with those that are responsible for our region, and they seemed very open to this, and said they've done it in other communities and gave lots of examples.
Okay, thanks, that's encouraging.
And, and, and Caltrans is realistic, they do note that we do have a lot of truck traffic.
Say that again?
Yes, and again.
They've changed in the last ten years, they say. They, they recognize that there are some things we're going to have to work with, so, are we going to turn the streets into one-lane streets? No, they're still going to be major streets, but they have a lot of examples of things they've done throughout the state that took a highway, a state highway that runs through a city that was focused solely on vehicles, autos and trucks, and made it more balanced so that it's for, it's still for autos and trucks, but also for people on bikes, also for people walking, and there's thought given in the design for all of them. So, we are pretty optimistic about the opportunity, particularly with the funding aspect as well. But this topic is also very key to the theme of the plan. Right now, there's nothing in the streetscape plan document, or in the specific plan document that says what we're going to do on Main Street or Broadway. It just says, we want to go, we want to study it, create a detailed plan that's going to have its own outreach and own input from both Council and the Commission as a later step. So, that is why, if you read through, that's why, on one hand, the plan's a lot smaller than the old plan. It doesn't try to bite off too much, acknowledging we're going to do a lot of steps in the future where we're going to iron out the details.
And I, not to knock Caltrans, as we all tend to do, but they have done a good job for us on our over crossings, the bridge, and our four-lane extensions up and down 101 from Santa Maria Way, so I can't say that they haven't been very receptive, and we cooperated with them to make their goals.
With the exception of Vetteravio.
Okay. Moving into the actual amendments to the document itself, with what we've kept and strengthened, as Peter was saying, we've reduced the size of the plan greatly, it's about 250 pages, it's about 100 now. What we did keep was, we kept that downtown vision that was derived from all the community outreach that was done in 2004, and still made that the prominent focus and direction we're taking. We did keep the districts and the district visions that were in the old document, we kept a lot of the design guidelines, again, we just made them guidelines, the idea and the direction we'd like to go. We kept all the relaxed standards, like Peter was mentioning earlier, downtown has the greatest density, the most flexible standards and development on your site anywhere in the city, and we kept that. And we kept the emphasis and need for a streetscape improvements. Again, we didn't put the details in there, but we emphasized we need to do a streetscape plan. As far as what has changed, as we discussed back in October, some of the constraints of the old document in that it was very specific and not user-friendly and very strict on its regulations, we've made it a much more flexible document, flexibility in design. There was an old regulation, or is it still in effect, a regulation in the plan that only 25% of your building frontage could be office in the downtown. We found that to be very cumbersome for businesses moving in and trying to occupy vacant storefronts, and so we want to remove that, we want it to be a flexible place to move in, allowing most uses, but with discretion and reviewing to make sure it fits into its surroundings and with the vision and intent of the downtown. We made flexibility in the process, the matrix is up there, that same matrix that we brought back in October about, you know, reviewing the things on the major corridors and making sure that our critical corners, the key intersections in our downtown receive the highest level of review, but things on the perimeters of the downtown could be handled administratively just to make, help streamline the process. We're adding legal non-conforming uses into the plan. Now, a non-conforming use is if there was a site or an area where at one time the zoning allowed for something to be there, and then zoning regulations changed and that use was not permitted to be there, or other uses were permitted instead, those existing uses under the old regulations become non-conforming. And a legal non-conforming is they were legally established at that time and can continue. Now, we want to make sure those uses continue downtown and couldn't rebuild and reuse their sites, but we, if it's a prohibited use now, we wouldn't allow new ones, but old or existing ones that have been there for years, like the Jordan Car Wash, can rebuild, can reuse, and stay where they are.
But that's a perfect example of how we've got to get this permitting process nipped in the butt, because it took them two years from when they started this, and Lord only knows how much money it cost them, so we really got to make sure that we don't allow businesses to have to go through this.
And that's exactly right, and so, that's why the goal of the plan is to be very flexible with the uses allowed. The old plan was very clear, you either had a checkbox saying you could go in, or it said, no, you couldn't. And so, the updated plan builds on lessons learned, and it gives the option for almost every use to go in, plus the added element that, and this is a topic that we'll get to, maybe I'll just go at this point, on the topic of prohibited uses, the prior plan had auto-oriented uses as a prohibited use, and a car wash was on that list. So, that is what caused that applicant to go through, first, they had to change the plan, so they actually had to go through a legislative action to change the plan, only when that happened could they actually come in and file for a permit. That takes, as you said, a very long time. So, for the most part, what we're doing in the plan is saying, almost every use is allowed, plus, even if you're prohibited, if you're already there, you can stay for as long as you need to.
And you know, Peter, that's just common sense, you know, so there's got to be a component where common sense plays into the rationale of some of these uses as well, just like what you said, it was a car wash, they wanted to remain a car wash, but it took a two-year endurance of the process, so going forward, keep that in mind in regards to, you know, we have to look at some projects in a common sense way.
And the challenge is, if the zoning ordinance rules say we can't let that use go in, then that's a wall that we need to break down. The plan tries to do that by making it much more flexible and a wider range of uses allowed. That, it does, it moves into another topic that has come up at the public outreach, and that is, some members of the community believe there are certain uses they don't want to see more of in downtown, and there's a short list of them on the screen, these are the tattoo parlors, smoke shops, hookah lounges, adult entertainment, and the liquor stores. So, there is public input on wanting to prohibit any of those new businesses coming in, but the legal non-conforming rules that we put in the plan, that we recommend be adopted, would be more flexible than anywhere else in the city, so if you're already there, you're okay, and you can rebuild. Anywhere else in the city, the standard rules are, if you're not allowed by zoning, you could stay, but you can't rebuild, you can't reinvest in the property. Downtown will be different, downtown's arguably supposed to be eclectic, so maybe it's okay if there's a sprinkling of these in there. But the question that we're going to have for the Commission and Council on the list of prohibited uses is, do you want a list of prohibited uses, ones that you don't want more coming into downtown?
There is, there is one use that as a planning commissioner, that we had decided that was not a good use, was convenience stores too, that we had a big discussion on that, and that might go under other uses.
It could, yes, yeah, and certainly, a convenience store trying to go at the main corner of the city, that maybe, arguably, maybe on some side street, it might be okay, but at the main corner, that's understood. So, at the end of the presentation and after the public comment, there'll be a list of topic areas that we want feedback, and one of them is on prohibited uses. Should there be things that couldn't come into the downtown as a new business, with the understanding that the plan would allow an existing business on this list to stay for as long as they feel like?
Right.
And then, moving on, so since the draft document was released to the public at the end of June, we have received a lot of feedback, and a lot of it has been positive. Some, a lot of the input has been very detailed also, and we want to make it very clear that all that input has been heard, the plan is supposed to be a roadmap at the high level, so some of the details of exactly what to do on certain sites and properties or for a certain event, we do not recommend putting in the plan. That does not mean we can't follow up on it as an implementation measure later, but it's just, our goal is to make the plan very high-level, very flexible, and then we'll decide as we go, like when the streetscape plan comes, we'll decide, should there be bike lanes, or should there be more crosswalks, how much public art should there be, and where should the locations be? But we don't want to bog the plan down with that right now, and we just want to make it clear that that doesn't mean we're not interested in those ideas, because all those ideas are very valuable. Also, there's been many who have read the plan in detail and have communicated with us that the plan, the text of the plan can be improved and refined to capture the message that we're trying to give, and that's the message of flexibility, of high levels of support in customer service, and the incentives and such. So, between now and the public hearings, we are looking to add and refine language to make sure that the document really reflects, you know, the positive cooperative and partnership type approach that we're talking about. Arguably, the changes we would make to the plan in those areas really won't affect any end products, but it will make the plan read a lot better, and I think that reflects the, you know, the philosophy of the city to be more supportive and strive for the partnerships. So, the next steps, on the, the first part of the next steps is, we need to finish the plan and bring it to public hearing. So, following this meeting, we're going to take all the input and the direction from the Council and make those refinement changes I just mentioned, and put together a final draft, and then come to public hearings with the Planning Commission, and then with the Council in the fall. And if the dates work out, it's very likely the effective date of the new plan would actually be January 1st of next year. Also, at the same time, we've gotten such strong feedback, positive, on the activities and the beautification and the partnerships, that we want to get started on some of these even though the plan isn't yet adopted. And so, for the activities, we, planning and recreation and parks, we want to work together to plan out that weekly event that's going to happen at the Town Center West parking lot, with the goal of having it start in the spring of next year, or whenever the weather starts being more pleasant. We hear about El Nino, we don't know if it's going to be pleasant as early in the year as possible, but whenever it is pleasant, we want to have that event starting and then have it run through the year. And the second area, on the partnerships and the coordination, we are setting planning up as the lead for downtown, all downtown items, but then we also have to, and we are in the process of scheduling, training for updating, upgrading our customer service and planning, because to be the concierge level type service, that's more of a private sector approach and mindset, not really a public sector mindset, and we want, that will need some work and training in order to change, so that we are ready when the plan is in effect. And then lastly, on the beautification, we need to start the groundwork for the streetscape plan. Now, the plan is going to be a lot more detailed than what we have in the specific plan. It's going to have arguably more complicated issues, because there's going to be trade-offs at that point, because we're getting into details. We aren't looking at hiring a consultant who has done this, but with our last meeting with Caltrans, they know of plans that have happened in the state, there may be a lot of consultants out there who can help us in this manner, but there's also special funding out there. And so, we would be working with engineering and recreation and parks to lay out the groundwork, trying to define the scope, looking for funding sources, and then trying to see who the consultants might be and what the cost might be. Once we get that, we can come back to Council and talk about the plan, the streetscape plan in more detail. So, a lot has happened since the October 2014, since the workshop in October of 2014. We have tried to align the draft plan with the Council and Commission statements and direction of October. The focus is on those three areas, activities, partnership, and beautification. We've had what we think is a very good outreach, a very good response from our outreach at the community meeting, and we are here tonight to get feedback also from the public again, and then from the Planning Commission and Council. So, this concludes our presentation. As a reminder of what the city manager mentioned, this is the recommended approach for the rest of the meeting, to have questions for staff, then go to public comment, then have the Planning Commission have their discussion, and the Council have their discussion. We also have a slide that has the discussion topics that we would like all of your feedback on, so when we are at that point, we can put this up. At this point, we are available for any questions.
Okay, questions from staff? Let's, I'll start there with you, Mr. Dickerson.
Sure. A couple of things. The funds that are available, the funds that are available for facade improvement, are those loans or grants?
At this time, I believe the program is more of a loan. And we are going to be looking at changing the program so that it is a grant. And looking at ways to make it so that it is more of a benefit, and more of an incentive.
And for the street beautification, are we basically just talking about the Broadway-Maine cross? Or is there some thought at some point of expanding that to outlying streets as well?
I think it's not set. But I think the expectation is that we will have the detailed plan for Broadway and Main, for the entire stretch that's in downtown. And then maybe have some templates for the other streets. Because there are still improvements that can be made on the other streets to make it easier, you know, for people to bike and cross streets and such. But we may not go in and design every street. We may just have kind of, when you have this type of street, here are options you can do.
And my final question would be, what type of timeframe would you hope to see the beautification, the street beautification portion of it, not necessarily the individual buildings and the, you know, but the actual R-end of things implemented and done?
I wish I had a good answer. We don't know. The goal is to get the plan done, and then incrementally take certain segments, apply for grant funding, and get certain pieces done. So it's going to be a case of how long it takes to get the plan done, how much grant funding is available, and how much, and the community input that's going to be part of the streetscape plan may, will add time, but it will make it at least a plan that all parties have embraced. So the goal would be to have something starting in, some segments starting in maybe a couple of years. On completion, we don't know.
Completion may be five or 10. Is that the timeframe you're trying to?
For Broadway and Main, maybe two to five.
Two to five, okay.
I'm sorry, I was going to start with Mr. Quigley. I just didn't look that far down. Mr. Quigley, go ahead and ask questions of staff.
I'd like to know, is the mixed-use element still part of the plan?
Yes, it is. The design guidelines and the encouragement is still mixed-use, especially for areas like Broadway and Main Street, where the regulations allow you to build up to 60 to 70 feet. Mixed-use would be a great kind of component there. However, they're not required. They are flexible, and that is the choice of the developer to do so. There will be benefits to them if they did want to build out their site with mixed-use. And it will still be something we encourage and recommend, but it's not something we will require.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez.
Oh, I don't know if you're working with Caltrans, but how will you deal with the traffic when you are widening the streets, being that Broadway and Main have a lot of traffic?
Well, you mentioned widening the streets. The streets probably won't be widened. We're probably going to still have whatever right-of-way we have.
The sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, from the edge of sidewalk and the planter area or the tree area to the other side of the street. There are, there's options to look at lane widths, although admittedly, we think the main lanes are going to probably stay as they are. There are options to look at the median or the free-left lane that's in the middle. That may be able to be adjusted. Look at the parking at the side and the sidewalk widths and such. There'll be some play-in widths. But in some cases, the widths may actually stay exactly as they are, and we just improve what's there. So, they're open to talking about those things, but they do acknowledge that part of the job of Main Street and Broadway is to have, like, truck traffic go out to Guadalupe and have other type of traffic go, you know, north and south. There may be options to strategically work with the trucking companies to try to make alternate routes more convenient, like at Bedaravia. The 2008 plan had a study and said what should be done is trying to get more of the trucks down to Bedaravia. There wasn't really any follow-up on that. But there are things we might be able to do to make the signalization on Bedaravia more conducive to trucks, that they're all synchronized in time, so they don't have to stop much, which may make it more attractive for them to go south a little bit instead of Main. Or, there are a lot of options out there, and we don't know at this time exactly which approach we're going to take. And that's going to depend a lot on public input and the hearing bodies.
And being that the last traffic study was done in 2008, do you plan to have another traffic study? Or is that the threshold we're going to be using? Because it is seven years.
We do have, we regularly get traffic counts of our streets. So we have that data available. When a development project makes a traffic study, they look at, okay, how much, what's going to change on this site? And how many extra trips might happen based on tables? And where might those trips go to and from? In this case, we're not, we're just talking about the streets themselves. So the traffic counts that we have will be very helpful. We may do some additional counts. We may do some analysis of what would happen if we do certain changes. At this point, that's pretty wide open.
Okay. And then another thing is parking. Do you anticipate sufficient parking, being that the parking lot will be taken up for the activity?
We see parking as one of the strengths of our downtown. Because of the parking structures and the lots, there's a lot of parking. What we see as a challenge is it's not very easy to get anywhere. So if you went to the mall parking lot and you said, oh, I want to go to Big Five, you're probably as likely to drive than to walk. One of the things that we're successful in making this feel like a downtown is we have to make it so that it's convenient enough and nice enough for you to walk, so that your first approach isn't, oh, I'm going to go and re-park. If we can make it easier to cross the street than if we have major events in the town center parking lot, the hope is that some of the parking could actually be in the structures, and people walk over. Because obviously, we'd be taking up the parking lot for the event.
Okay, Mr. Andrade.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The questions I have really relate to whether or not you have any strategies about dealing with the intersection of Main and Broadway. That is, we have several corners that appear to be, at least for the foreseeable future, they seem to be okay. But we've had some other issues with regard to one of the corners. And do we have any strategies about how to deal with that? Is the city considered buying that corner? I mean, I don't know. And I'm not privy to that kind of information. But it really is an important, it's become an eyesore in a lot of ways. And it's an important corner, and it's been that way for a long time. I know we talked about, Councilwoman Waterfield talked about limiting the kinds of operations that would go in there, and we had those discussions. So I'm concerned that we're talking about this broad plan about beautifying Broadway and Main Street, and yet, right smack in the middle of our downtown, we have an issue that really hasn't been resolved. And I've not seen anybody really take that issue head-on and try and wrestle with it and resolve it in an acceptable fashion.
A lot of preliminary thought has been given to the topic of the corners. We have spoken to the property owners involved. And at this point, we are not proposing anything too detailed in the plan, because there are so many moving parts. It would be way too far in advance to try to put that down into the document. But the city owns two of the corners. And then there's the Boot Barn corner, and then there's that last corner. As I said, we're talking to property owners. We're looking strategically at what we can do with our properties and such. And as, after the plan's adopted, as we move forward, there will be layers of implementation where we do get more into detail, and possibly even have a master plan of the areas that are controlled by the city and that corner. At this point, one of the key things that we have heard from property owners in the entire area is that they want to see the city take some steps. And so, they're very excited about what we're talking about, about events and getting foot traffic there, and streetscape, and investing in that. And the feedback we're getting is, that is going to make them more open to spending their money on buying properties and building. Can we guarantee anything will happen? At this time, no. But it's one of the issues and ideas that we are wrestling with.
And is it, how far north and south are we considering making these changes? And then east and west? Do we know how many blocks? Four or five blocks? I saw the map.
So I can't see it. But up north, I believe Fessler is the boundary. And then to the east, I believe it's school. And then to the west, I believe it's church. And then the very tip down at the bottom is Morrison. So that's kind of along Broadway and Main, the boundaries of the downtown-specific plan.
It can't be church, because church runs east and west.
Sorry.
How far west?
Thornburg, or the street right after Thornburg. Right around Thornburg. And then the rest of Broadway and Main Street are picked up by the Entrada-specific plan.
Mr. Brown.
Santa Maria's been a great place to live. But we have made some mistakes over the years and things that have been done. And one of them was downtown was a very big mistake. When 101 went through there, the traffic moved through pretty good. But then when we changed and moved the road out to the outskirts of town, we made our streets downtown much bigger, couldn't get across them to do shopping and stuff. It just made it very unusable for people to do their shopping and stuff down there. So they left that area. What we need to do is what Santa Barbara, Aurora Grande, Pismo, and San Luis have did. They took the streets that were originally 101, and then they were all bypassed. All of our cities on the Central Coast have been bypassed with 101 now. They took those and they used, got a lot of use out of them now. Every one of those places has an activity going on one day out of the week in their downtown areas. We don't have anything going on in our downtown areas to that manner. So if there was something that we could do to get the traffic out of there one night a week, I know it's difficult, because that street is back-to-back cars during a lot of time. But if we could do something to get some use out of our street with sales. You go up to San Luis Obispo on a Thursday night, they have the whole street in there, Higera Street, is just loaded with people selling food, clothing, and all those types of things. And it would really help Santa Maria if we were able to do something instead of just having a big four- to six-lane road flying through our town.
Thank you. Mr. Boyson? Yes. Mr. Ora?
Well, Commissioner Brown was just saying activities and things like that. And I'll just say that it seems to me we're somewhat one-up in that area, because we have a Recreation Parks Department that spearheads, you know, they've got the night movies. And I'll be talking a little bit later about concerts in the park. I mean, I was there this last weekend, and there had to have been 800, maybe 1,000 people. And I don't know how many pop-ups, including my own, over at Rotary Park. But, and they've got the Grapes and Grains function coming. And I guess the coordination, and they've got staff that do these kinds of setting up events. And I think they know a lot of the people out and around. So I think we have an opportunity, and you were saying that, Peter, needed it, that's one of the things we want to kick off right now. And the idea, and I think Gary Grossman, Westside Town Center, has indicated that he's up to the task, is just some of the infrastructure and things like that to back that up. And I know the chamber, I see Mr. Morris out there, that, you know, they've got things that they do, and they even have some funding to help organizations kick that up. So we're looking at all the diversification. Some places, that might be a place to move people from Vets Hall or the park there downtown to put on functions, Cinco de Mayo, and other things like that, that I think a lot of people are looking for, an expansive place, a little more, I'll say, exposure than the fairgrounds, which there's nothing wrong with the fairgrounds, that's a great, they've got great facilities and that. But I think bringing people down to downtown will open things up, and I think enlighten a lot of people to come down here. So I, and I see Alex is in the back. I was going to ask him some questions, but I think his, you know, he's got community outreach people and other things, and they're working on this every single day with organizations. And so it seems to me that we've got a lead dog right now to kick that off. And that should be maybe one of the points that we address quickly.
And Mr. Ora touched on that. The plan that I've seen, and this was months ago, that Gary Grossman had is perfect. Private-public partnership there. I mean, great idea, and the way you, the way he wants an amphitheater over there, and the architecture, and the trees, the landscaping, everything was just beautiful. I just think we need to really go with that, because that's perfect. You know, can you go back to the map on that? What I think would be important is to see a map that, how much of that is owned by government? You know, like, we own the parks, and we own the shopping center, and we own the parking structure, which gives me, brings me to another point, is putting something up on that top floor of the parking structure. And I won't tell you all the things that have been suggested, because I don't know if they would go up there, but...
We talked about bicycle races, actually, when we did our criterion downtown. We talked about, let's go up on the fourth floor of the parking structure. Run it up there.
And the bridge that goes from the mall across. Something like art on the bridge, and maybe have an art show. I think at one time, maybe a restaurant was suggested, but I don't think it would, wouldn't take, wouldn't take that. And I had notes on here about the permitting process with the Downtown West and the Downtown East, and how we would, how we would give incentives along with the permits, which I think is important. I think it's important for the city to take the first step, to invest in whatever landscaping, streetscaping we need to do to show the people that are in business there that they are interested. You know, another thing, when the outreach meeting was done at the end of July in this room, and you said we had 70 people. And I guess I didn't ask, but how many were business owners or property owners in the downtown area?
Unfortunately, we don't have that information. We had a sign-in sheet, but we didn't ask whether they were resident.
I'd like to ask now, how many property owners or business owners are there here from the downtown? Because there's others that I know of that I don't see and haven't seen in any of the meetings. And I just think we need to make sure that we are getting out to them. Okay? Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, both Bob, excuse me, both Councilmen Ora and Mayor Patino mentioned Mr. Grossman's project. And looking at the pictures in here, I was hoping that those might have been implemented in here. Because that, this is exactly what we're talking about. A place where it creates an environment to bring people in the Town Center West. And he, he created, in my opinion, a perfect, perfect project, which I thought is a great start. If you have a private person wanting to come in and start it right away, it would be great for all the businesses that are surrounding it as well. I also have a question in the back of this implementation plan. And it talks about create and fund an economic development consultant position and program. Wouldn't that be a duplication of what we're doing right now with the Chamber of Commerce?
The, the goal and thought with that was to have someone, the one at the Chamber is citywide and maybe to have one focused specifically on downtown and downtown real estate. Maybe catered specifically towards retail and restaurant and trying to bring that there. Also with the idea and focus of maybe doing PR and marketing for downtown. That was something that was put in the implementation to be explored. All of the implementation measures are something that we need to explore more in the future and our ideas of avenues we can explore, so.
I would think that with the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Glenn Morris being here along with Dave Cross, that has to do a lot with what they do and the city already gives funding for them to do that. So I would see that we would be duplicating that effort and growing government a little bit more. So I'm not too crazy about, about that one suggestion.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Inaga?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have questions, but I do have a couple of comments I think I'd like to share. First of all, Mr. Opel, kudos to you because this is a dynamic duo. I mean, they've done an awesome job. I mean, the community meeting, they did an awesome job. They've done a great job of being able to communicate in a way that is understandable what the goals are and what the plan is. And I just, I really appreciate that because this can sometimes be complicated as we've seen from the old plan. It was, I don't know who actually ever read that thing from beginning to end, so. I just really, to me, you're like the dynamic duo, so I just, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the, the balance of visionary and real, and reality. And so I think that's really important too, because I think sometimes, you know, I was a strong, a big proponent of the previous plan, but I think it got bogged down in vision and probably wasn't realistic. So I appreciate that balance between what is our vision and what we can realistically do. I think that it's really important because we're all excited about it and it's finally something's going to happen. It seems like, you know, the stars are all aligning, the planets are aligning, but that we not rush it and that we take our time and that we do it right the first time. Because we have made mistakes, as a couple of people have mentioned, and we don't want to do that here. This is an opportune time, so I think that we all need to kind of take a deep breath and sit back and let the process happen, but not try to rush to get something done and then regret it later. I, I would be concerned about trying to tie staff down to timeframes, like, well, when is this going to happen and when is that going to happen? Because we are just and still a development process. And as I think, you know, you both shared, it's this meeting and the previous meeting that, you know, we've got a plan, but these, you know, we've got a lot that we have to do to do that. So I would hope that we're just cautionary and not kind of tying you down to a timeframe. And I think in this process, certainly patience for sure is going to be a virtue, the more patient we are, I think the better outcome we're going to have. And I think that part of what I would like to see is some sort of timeframe for just check-ins with council. You know, that whether it be quarterly or whatever the timeframe is, is that, you know, you just come back and, you know, you let us know. These are, you know, because we're probably not going to see a lot for a while, but at least you can come and let us know. We've met with these people, this is what's in the process. So we can at least have a sense that even though we don't see anything, something's happening.
We'd be able to handle that through council notes. And I think as, as Peter has mentioned, if we get direction tonight, it's pretty clear what we need to do to bring the plan first to the Planning Commission and then back to you. So there aren't, aren't going to be too many months where you're not going to hear anything, but I can certainly put something in the council notes each month to let you know where we're at.
And I appreciate that and I, and I love the council notes. We get so much information in the council notes. I always feel like I want to tell everybody what's going on. So I think maybe something maybe quarterly you feel is too often, maybe every six months, because then the public gets that, right? Because it's hard for us. We get so much information in our council notes and I always think, oh, this is so important, people would want to know. But hard to carry that around, right, and communicate it to everybody, so. But I'll leave that up to you. You know what your stack time is.
Ms. Waterfield, you said you had one more?
I have one more request. The plan talks about Caltrans Main Street Manual two thousand and thirteen. Can I get a copy of that, please? I would love to, to look at that. Thank you.
You know, I, I did have one more thing highlighted. It was on page thirty-six. And it said, "A downtown permit shall not be approved unless all findings are met." And I'm just wondering if the downtown permit should just be pulled out of the plan and be separate. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out because I'm thinking that might just be a good idea. Okay, so now I'm going to go to public comment. Madam Clerk, how many slips do we have?
Madam Mayor, we have eight requests to speak.
Okay. Leonardo Espinoza Jr. Followed by Alicia Peralas.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, Planning Commission, city staff, and to the rest of my brothers and sisters from the community. So my name is Leonardo Espinoza Jr. I've become a champion of youth and young adults for our city. And basically, I'm, I'm out here because I want to learn. I'm trying to get as many of our peers to also learn the ways of our city. I'm really happy to see some of my peers here that I went to Hancock with. And so it's great to see that some of us are ready to take the steps to kind of get to learn what's going on and how we can help. City staff, I want to congratulate you on, on the plan. I mean, I believe in the plan. It's, it's an opportunity for us to grow as a city. I come from that area, Furniture Depot, if you guys know where that is, right down the corner from the street photo. So I grew up in there. Since a kid, I've always been giving my dad suggestions for the business. Can we put a planner out there? How about a bench or something? You know, he's like, no, we're not allowed. I was like, but Dad, we can bring in more business. So I know this is not only going to help ours, our family's business, but as well as the others. Secondly, I know a handful of owners or business owners just from, you know, growing up in the area. And so their families are from here, their kids go to school here, so they're invested locally. When we invest in our local business leaders, they invest in us back. And so that is how we're going to get rid of all the iss, not all the issues, but that's how we can work together. And I feel like it'll help with the, the violence issues we were having earlier. I mean, when we're more connected as a community, there are only certain areas where violence can hide. Let's see. So, oh, another comment. Thank you for the overflow room. That was a great thing we had going on because I've been here where we've had a good turnout and it's just gets pretty hectic when we don't have that overflow room, so thank you for that. What else? I really liked the direction you guys have been taking over the last year, two years. I've been involved coming to as many meetings as I can. At first, I really felt like you guys only cared about certain sections of the city, but that's starting to change. And I feel like you guys do care about a lot of, every area of the city because we are one community. And so I thank you for that. And, and basically, yeah, I'm excited to see what goes on. Definitely encouraging all of you to, you know, let's get the ball rolling on this. This is, this is what I'm talking about. Like I said, I've been coming to a lot of cities, city meetings, and there's been, there's been some angry meetings, there's been some sad meetings. And so this is a meeting that I'm glad I came to because it's a positive one. And so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Alicia Peralas, followed by Emily Garcia.
Hello. My name is Alicia Peralas. I have been born and raised in Santa Maria, so I've lived here my whole life, given the fact that I moved away for a few years. But I would just like to thank you guys for all of your hard work. I really believe that the passion that they have for our community and the good things that they would like to see is for the best. And a lot of the people, including myself, feel that same way. We, people that grew up in Santa Maria, I don't know how many people here who have, but we have kind of been bypassed. We're, there's a lot of derogatory things being said about our community and I would like to see that be gone for good. I would like to see downtown be revitalized and people to just rush into our community and want to invest and see new businesses take place. And it would just be a really awesome thing if this started to take place now in our generation. So thank you so much.
Alicia, I got to tell you that I moved here thirty years ago and during that time, Santa Maria was the hub of the Central Coast. People did rush here to do their shopping and their activities and entertainment and stuff. So we want to bring that back to Santa Maria, absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Emily Garcia, followed by Angel Alexander Fuentes Moreno.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank you guys so much for your dedication and I think that's such an amazing plan, the beautification of the downtown. And I think a huge issue that people are really concerned about is the safety in their, in the downtown area. And I think a huge part of that is just the way it looks. And a lot of people judge things by how they look. And it's a reality and it's in our city, a lot of, I go to Hancock College and I hear a lot of negative things about how the downtown looks, about how unsafe it looks, about there's, about how there's nothing to do here in Santa Maria. Everyone wants to leave this town. Everyone wants to go to San Luis Obispo or Santa Barbara or Pismo to enjoy their Friday nights or their Saturday nights. And I think it would be amazing if we could say, oh, I want to enjoy my Friday night downtown in Santa Maria. Because this is such a beautiful area and it's, it's such a shame that people don't want to spend their evenings or their time, their free time in Santa Maria. So I think that the Friday night food truck idea is an amazing idea to bring people out, to bring the youth out, to bring everyone, families. It would be a great opportunity for local bands, singers, dancers. I used to be a part of the dance program at Allen Hancock College and we were always trying to find places to perform. And I think that would be a great place to perform at. And I know that there's a lot of people that are a part of the art community and theater arts and all of that. That would just love to perform. And it would bring a lot more attraction to Santa Maria, not just by our community, but people would probably want to come to Santa Maria from San Luis Obispo now and Santa Barbara and Avila Beach and Oceano, everywhere. And I think it would be a great idea to have food trucks for, for us to see what kind of food there is for, to involve culture. We have a lot of different cultures in Santa Maria and it would be great to, to even have food trucks of different cultural foods, of having different cultural events, everything like that. I think that would be a great opportunity to create unity in our community. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Garcia, please continue to come to these meetings because we love the input. In the economic forecast, they were telling us that there are more young people moving to our community in their thirty, in their thirties and there's nothing for them to do here. Lots, lots for young kids to do, but nothing for the old, you know, after they get eighteen, so.
Right.
So continue to come here and remind us.
Okay, thank you.
Are you eighteen-year-olds or population or two?
Yes, there's a lot of students at Allen Hancock College.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Angel Fuentes Moreno, followed by Lori Temora.
Madam Mayors, fellow city council members. So my name is Angel Alexander Fuentes Moreno. And my colleague Kenny Debone actually called me this evening, like, that the city planning was going to mention their, their vision about downtown. And I went to my car, I canceled my haircut appointment and.
I, I had viewed that same thing.
Let's get it, yeah. So, yeah, I just heard the vision and honestly, it took a lot of me to not scream and be like, yes, I love it. So I was just listening to it and I'm going to take the words of Terry Zuniga. You guys are a dynamic duo. Bro, that's awesome. So my occupation is a caregiver. I work in Aurora Grande. And most of my coworkers are from San Luis Obispo in the five cities area. And just this morning, they were talking about how they would never move to Santa Maria because it's full of gang violence, it's dirty. And honestly, I, someone that was raised in Santa Maria, I love Santa Maria. And that hurt me, you did. And I think this is a perfect start to just change the outlook of what Santa Maria is because we have beautiful people. You know, and I think it's time to, to represent that. And especially the beautification plan, I love that because lots of people here, I mean, I mean, it is dirty and that's what they feel, you know? They don't feel valued. And just from improving that brings them confidence, you know, as, as, as a community. And I think that's perfect. And the activities, that's why there's lots of gang violence because there's nothing to do here in Santa Maria, exactly like you mentioned earlier. And if we bring up, bring activities, yeah, I think that would be awesome. But, yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys for really looking out for my city because I don't know if you guys were born here or not, but it really means a lot to me. And thank you for listening to me. I hope you guys have a great day.
Lori Temora, followed by Craig Schaefer.
Good evening. My name is Lori Temora and I've worked with city projects for a number of years. And there's a couple of points I'd like to make before I show some slides. First of all, the downtown specific plan is about fifty percent owned by government. You take out the streets, Caltrans and the city, you look at the sidewalks and all the parks, the state properties that are owned by DMV, you got the County of Santa Barbara, the court system, your parking lots, your structures. You know, there's a lot of responsibility on government in the downtown specific plan. And what should be, first of all, I think that there should be a map that shows government properties and what it entails because you'll see a mirror image of privately owned land. And the partnership between fifty percent private and fifty percent public. So it's on both sides to step up. What is really important also is that new development has been about fifty-fifty. The library, the transit center. On the flip side, you have the theater and you have Hancock Terrace. Those are about the only projects that really have come forward in the last eight years. And, you know, there's successes there. I don't know if the downtown specific plan, even as a preamble, should have a story about what transitioned from two thousand and eight to now. Because I think those are important steps in moving this project forward. The other, and, and also include photographs and elevations of the projects that were approved. Because those show the decision-making process that those projects went through at the city council and the planning commission. And they should be emulated in the document. The other thing that I think is important with the idea of doing events is that we should have maybe at the Planning Commission meeting and City Council meeting when this comes forward, a current schedule of events that currently happened in the downtown area. Between the parades, the events at McClellan, the events at the Town Center West. That's what you build from. You don't just kind of start over. You build from what you have. And if the, if the farmer's market on Wednesday, you know, is set up and done in two hours, why not have the food trucks roll in right after that or along with it so that you just roll into a great Wednesday event at the Town Center West? So I think the city council and the planning commission need to know what currently is happening at the library, at Town Center Mall, so that you can build from those successes. Big question is, who owns the bridge?
The city.
Thank you. The city should allow signage on the bridge. If you're going to have an event, is it okay if I just talk?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If, if, if there's going to be events that are happening on McClellan, but nobody knows about it because there isn't a sign on the bridge, what's the point of having the event on McClellan? So I think that there, the bridge needs to have a sign plan. The artists in the community can come up with a format and it would be a great way to encourage activity and keep the idea of activity in the downtown center. The convenience store issue, please note that there is a convenience store in the downtown specific plan area and that's over on Boone Street. And that little corner market is planning on improving itself. So, you know, they're going to come in with an application, so don't outlaw convenience stores. The downtown mall and the downtown Town Center West, there's a confusion in the document in regards to how the permitting will happen in those existing units. And I don't know necessarily if they need to go through a downtown permit if they're already in the existing building. And if I could go ahead and show some of the slides.
Would that be Lori, the town mall?
Yeah, the mall is required to go to the planning commission if they change a use inside the mall. That's how this document's read. I mean, you know, based on the color coding of the maps and.
Just to clarify that before Lori goes on, we, we have not required that since I've been here. We've had a. We've had an understanding with the mall owner that whatever happens in the mall stays in the mall, basically.
And that's the way it should be.
So we have not required... They have to get building permits if they're making changes and stuff.
Absolutely.
But obviously, change out of the different businesses, the retail uses and stuff have not required.
So that's already in place? It's just never been used?
Well, it's just because the way the plan is drawn, the mall is within the downtown plan and so it gives the impression that they are required to do the permits. We haven't required that.
What if somebody else comes in, though, after you've gone and decides they're going to do that?
They'll make the same wise decision that I did.
Maybe we need to put your wise... Maybe we need to put your wisdom down in writing then.
And again, I'm reading the words on the paper and the colors of the pictures on the map.
Absolutely.
And the Town Center Mall and Town Center West is coded blue. And on the next page, it says, "The light blue goes to the Planning Commission for any changes." So I think it is something that needs to be clarified.
That needs to be addressed, yeah.
Okay, so the vision. This is the vision of what could happen in Town Center West. It shows along the bottom is the frontage along Broadway. And it's a widening promenade. Take that street that doesn't have any trees or that sidewalk without any trees, widen it and plant trees along the edge. It moves from the bridge crossing, which you can see halfway down there. You go to the south is an amphitheater. So you have an actual event facility right on Broadway for gatherings, for events, for evening things. As you move towards the boot barn, you see those four square buildings. Those are covered areas that can be used for the farmer's market, can be used for wine tasting, can be used for arts, can be used for everything, but they're permanent structures. And if you could flip through just the rest of the pictures, so again, the promenade. Wouldn't you like to live in a town that has that? Go ahead. Here's our amphitheater. And even having some of the food booths around the amphitheater. Go ahead. This is actually the space between the Phallus Store and the utility building. And that blank wall, this is a stage and an opportunity to do the night theater or a number of different things. Keep going. Here's the buildings that could serve as just an open barn structure to give shade. And yet you'd have the opportunity to do night lighting and have events happening throughout the evening. They could even be uplit so it looks like things are happening and really draw attention to the downtown. Yeah, keep going. And add some additional features. Previously, there was talk about the towers or signage or something that really sells that this is a place, this is an activity that was happening on a routine basis so people start seeing it regularly. Go ahead. Then again, the amphitheater. And again, here's the bridge. Here's an opportunity for signage and activities on the bridge. Who's been on the bridge? Okay, so everybody start... It's a wide bridge and, you know, it's kind of fun being up there with the traffic down below, but nothing ever happens up there. And then you could do an art gallery along there. Keep going. Is that... Okay. Anyways, this is a vision of a local owner of Town Center West. It's something that we had hoped could be a vision statement within the downtown-specific plan because it's based in reality because it can be done. It's not somebody else's plan from another city. This is our town, this is our center. And we request that some of these visions become part of the downtown-specific plan to help drive that direction. So, and then the last thing, and of course, I can't leave without saying this, the incentive program in the back of the page does not provide for reduction of developer fees. And ironically, the downtown-specific plan was based on the fact that there'd be less traffic because it's pedestrian-friendly, but there's no acknowledgement of reducing the traffic fee. If there's no cars, there should be no fee. There's existing parks that have been built by the city before. Reduce the park fee. There's opportunities here to at least give for new developments or existing developments some reduction of fees for the downtown or no fees at all. You want to encourage the development to happen. You want to encourage infill. This little special part of Santa Maria, and I'm going to call it the heart of the city, should have special care and special recognition and special consideration. So please reduce the fees.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Lori.
Thank you.
Craig Schaefer, followed by Dave Cross, followed by Glenn Morris.
Madam Mayor, Council members, Planning Commissioners. I'm Craig Schaefer, resident of Santa Maria for 36 years. I'm a member, former president of the Santa Maria Arts Council, former chair of the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission, and I'm Communications Manager for Pacific Conservatory Theater, PCPA. I've spent most of my life in the arts, volunteering or working in the arts. I'm going to be amplifying what Lori was showing about the Town Center West, which I had no idea when I came here tonight. So I'm going to present my prepared statement as is. And I just think that that should be part... I mean, that plan is a plan that should be in a plan. Again, I want to commend the staff on a lot of really excellent work that they put into this plan and some of the latest revisions that I saw noting the public comment, which supports public art in our downtown, which I think is vital. As I mentioned at the meeting last month, just wide tree-lined sidewalks, as illustrated in several of the demonstration photos, are alone not enough to draw people downtown. Encouraged to hear that that plan is including events. I think that's essential. The center of town should have a spacious and inviting public park or revision to the Town Center West area, which could support art-in-the-park events, music or other live entertainment, dining and galleries, give people a reason to come downtown. I'm happy to see in the revised plan recognition of the public comments, which stated a strong interest in having public art being a major component of downtown revitalization. I still think that the plan really should specify areas for art, specific projects such as murals and sculptures and locations, along with suggestions for any redevelopment projects, how to incorporate public art into those redevelopment projects, along with galleries. And while we're talking revitalization, I don't think it's too far-fetched an idea for the city to consider underwriting a creative art center, a space to serve as an incubation, an incubator for artists, as well as providing art classes, performance space, art gallery and have artists co-op run it. And again, I can't stand in front of you and speak about arts and the importance of art, which I think is vital to a community, without mentioning the desire to see banners along our streets to herald the richness of our artistic community, music, dance, theater, visual arts and museums. We should be shouting that from the rooftops, at least waving it from flagpoles. And if you noticed, the slides that Lori brought forward had banners all the way down the thoroughfare and the concourse. So I want to thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schaefer. I don't think people realize how many artists there are that live in Santa Maria that go out of the community to sell their works. There are just loads of them. We are so proud of those people. Dave Cross, followed by Glenn Morris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave Cross, Chamber of Commerce. I think the Chamber of Commerce needs to stay a big collaborative partner in this. Over the last couple of years, we've invested a lot in the downtown outreach to businesses. We put together a downtown merchants committee. We're always trying to push that forward. On the economic development front, I'm working with companies that are interested in the downtown. And as a matter of fact, there was one earlier tonight that I worked with, East Chapel Car Wash. So I think having a separate economic development director for the downtown is just redundancy. But I do think we need to streamline the permit process. We need to add flexibility. We need to keep an eye on what goes into the downtown, but we still have to be business-friendly. And while it's great to have that customer service element, which is going to be welcome, businesses need to know what it's going to cost. They need to know the consistency of the permit process. They need to know all those things. So having a level playing field with permit processes streamlined is very important. And finally, the facade program. I think that's a great program to bring back and I'm glad they're looking at doing that. I think if we can, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Morris in the chamber, but if we could get a couple of businesses involved in that program, I think other businesses will come on board. So for all those reasons, the chamber needs to stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Planning Commission, city staff. I want to come back to a point that the staff made right at the beginning of this, one of their foundational elements. And I think it's the piece that we've talked about it a little, but it can't be overemphasized. What makes downtowns work is people. And I think a lot of times in the economic development, we get twisted and we start thinking, "If we can bring the businesses in, if we can get the stores there, the people will show up." And it really is the other way around. We really have got to get people into the downtown first and then the business owners will come to serve them. And as we do that, I think the flexibility and uses will help. I think the events piece, and that's an area where I think we have some influence over some of the community events, as Mr. O'Rourke mentioned, and will certainly help on the event side. But I think that balance, and one of the points that they talked about that I think maybe have been overlooked, is the additional flexibility on workspace, offices. I mean, you know, it's one thing to have people in the downtown in the evenings, it's another to have them here all day long. Some of that is accomplished by housing around the edges of the downtown. That's a fantastic step. But it's important that we get people coming downtown to work because then they go to lunch or they stop and pick up, you know, they're dry cleaning on the way in and out, or they picked up flowers because they're working too late. That's an element that I think has to be front and center in this is that as we build this downtown, it's not just retail. Retail is critically important, but it's not just retail. We have to get people into the downtown to come to work during the day. And so I applaud them for really focusing on that need to bring people first and to do it in that multi-pronged approach. As Mr. Cross said, we're certainly going to be... And Ms. Waterfield, the chamber's here to be your partner. We will continue to work with this. We're excited about the direction that this is going. We'll continue to work on the details with the staff. And we will continue, as I think has been pointed out, to also be your representatives and to continue to focus on the other parts of the community, in particular, the industrial zone, those family-supporting jobs that need to come in to really balance out the community. So we look forward to engaging with staff more as we get into the implementation details on this, but really wanted tonight applaud the staff, I think, for really having thought through what are the key elements that will be required to make a downtown work. And I think we've talked about those and wanted to just really reemphasize those key points tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Now that we've heard from the public, and I want to thank all of you for letting me play a sort of loose tonight so that people can speak because I think this is a very important issue rather than just give everyone three minutes and then cut them off, especially Mrs. Temora. I'd like to close the public input and I'd like to bring the issue back to the Planning Commission. And any discussion from you or any... Because we're going to come to the council and then we'll be giving directions to staff. So if there's any comments that you haven't made that you would like to make now at the Planning Commission? Mr. Quigley.
Well, no comments, but I don't even know if I could offer any critical, any critical statement at all about anything going on tonight. But I found it was a very, very positive response from the public and just keep up with the good work.
I do have to say that it was great to hear all those comments, you know, and the safety concern and the way things look is so important. You know how they say, "Don't judge a book by its cover," but most people do. So that's why I think just polishing up the downtown area, cleaning it up and just really, like I said earlier, just I think when you belong to something, you usually have a logo or a pin or you dress a certain way, you know, firefighters wear a uniform and so forth. So I really think that a color scheme that is followed in downtown by the businesses that the city will contribute or grant, you know, give them under a grant would really help in that area, starting now. It's not something that would be too expensive, I believe, for the city to do before the planning kicks off.
Thank you.
I'd like to first start off by adding my voice to all the other people and saying, "Mr. Opel, what a tremendous job your staff has done, Peter and Neta, and I'm sure there are people behind them as well. You guys have done a phenomenal job and I really appreciate the work that you've done on this new document." As far as recommendation goes, I can only say that I agree with many of the things that have been said this evening. This is, as Peter's pointed out, this is a document in the big picture. The devil will be in the details. And as pieces of that come out, I'm sure there'll be a lot of debate and discussion. But as long as we can hold on to the core values of this higher picture, then I think we may have a real winner on our hands. And hopefully, the business community will be able to see that as well, especially if we step up first and give them an idea of what it is we have going on and we actually implement some of those things, then there'll be incentive to follow through on their side as well.
Mr. Roddy.
Thank you. I want to echo some of the comments that my fellow commissioners have made. I don't think it's just the dynamic duo. I think it's a terrific trio that's put this thing together. And I'm happy that the focus is moving. There are some issues that I'd like resolved, like strategies with regard to Main and Broadway. And that's going to take some thinking and some hard work. And also, I think that we ought to consider, perhaps including in the part of the plan, is what Ms. Temora has suggested tonight. I'm not completely sold that that is the way we ought to perceive, but I think it ought to be looked at and evaluated and considered seriously to see whether or not that fits within the overall plan. It does bring some excitement to downtown and I think that's something we should think about. But all in all, I think this is a great step forward. I think we're moving with all deliberate speed and hopefully by next year, things will get going and we'll have a different looking downtown. Thank you all. You've done a great job.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, I'd like to thank you also. It's been very interesting listening to all of you. Sounds like you really know what you're doing, you're really trying to do things. It was interesting listening to the people here in the crowd. You asked a lot of good questions, made a lot of good suggestions, and this has been very enjoyable. Now, if we could just get rid of this group, we'd be in really good shape. Are you my commissioner? No, no, no.
You could probably get more than three votes on that, Mr. Brown.
Keep your hands down.
Okay. I'll bring this back to the City Council for deliberation. Who wants to start? Mr. Boyson, sure.
Sure. Well, and obviously, I don't want to over too many things that have already been said, but I certainly agree, Ian Roger Brown brought up a good point, is the idea of being able to maybe close off part of downtown for activities. And I think, you know, Peter and I have talked about it in the past, of maybe closing Broadway between Main and Cook Street and, you know, being able to, you know, walk from Town Center West to Town Center East and vice versa and these sort of things and have that excitement in the activities, I think would go a long way. As Ms. Temora said, you know, people are going to be the key. And I think that may be what was wrong with our old downtown-specific plan, that we figured, "Build it and they will come." We need to get the people there and then see it built after that. So, you know, we... I like the idea of the public partnership, public-private partnerships, like we have with Town Center West with the ideas that they have. Let's take, obviously, take those plans and try and incorporate them as much as we can into our downtown-specific plan, the new downtown-specific plan. But I think the real key is, let's don't box ourselves in either. Let's make sure that we're flexible. Let's look at, okay, if we do that there, how's that going to affect the Pearlman Park or how's that going to affect, you know, whatever we do at the corner for the Town Center and the parking structures and this sort of thing. at the corner for the town center and the parking structures and this sort of thing. As far as, and I'm jumping around here a little bit, as far as prohibited uses, certainly, I think that there are some things that probably should end up on that list, and maybe that list needs to be a matrix, similar to what we do for the approval process. Maybe we allow tattoo parlors in certain areas, but we don't allow them on the key corners and this sort of thing. I personally don't have tattoos, but there's enough people out there that I know that there's got to be a market for it. So, you know, certain things like that, I think that, you know, let's be, let's be careful and not, never say never type thing. You know, who knows what is going to be the next attraction for downtown. I like the idea of signs on the bridge, again, flexibility being the key, streamlining the process. I think that this is a real good start. What I'd like to see is that next step of going with that urban designer, you know, bringing them in, having them take a look at some of the work that's already been done, look at the things that we can do with Caltrans, this new improved Caltrans that we're all waiting to meet. But I think it's great, and I think the idea of if we can discourage truck traffic from Main Street and Broadway and get it out into the, some of the other areas of the city, like get it down to Bataravia, get it, and that sort of thing, that can only help us with building this pedestrian bicycle-friendly downtown that we're looking for. So, again, very, very excited. I think we just need to get going.
Mr. O'Rourke.
I guess ditto is the thing. I do, I want to compliment, you know, we kind of gave the direction just nine months ago, and I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but you come through a lot to get to this point, and you've had discussions and things like that, and I compliment you on that for sure, because that, you know, you tried to do your regular jobs too, and all the other applications with business starting to crank up a bit. And that Commissioner Andrade asking the question, or I guess maybe it was Robert Dickerson saying, you know, how are you going to implement this and get rolling with this and help people when you're swamped? So I guess we'll just have to come up with new staff or overtime or something. So I want to say, quick time, couple of things. 1987, the San Maria Criterion shut down Broadway. I don't know how many of you were here, and I was the race director, and we shut down Broadway from Cook to Boone, and we raced the bicyclists dead, from Paul Nelson Poole down to Boone, on Broadway, down to Cook and around. We had 570 riders come that day. Now, I'll say, the only complaint we had was from the Presbyterian Church, people were trying to go to church and had no idea why now they closed the street for guys in tight pants. Anyway, it can be done. I know it was monumental because the Recreation and Public Works Department did that, but that was a pretty significant event that took place. Now, I'll address, I know Commissioner Hernandez indicated about a color scheme. In a lot of the places that I've seen, it seems that you're, if you're a little more creative and dynamic, allowing people to maybe have this kind of design, these vibrant colors versus Bob O'Rourke's old drab brown on a building. So I'd be hesitant, this is personal opinion, I'd be hesitant about restricting some of the color schemes in the architecture in businesses that are right next to each other, because I think people kind of like that, rather than the old Bob O'Rourke brown for six blocks, you know, as you're walking down there, you go to sleep and run into a tree. So, from that aspect, seems to me we're in the right direction. You know, Craig Schaefer and the arts people are chopping, and that might be an issue where we allow some of the businesses that say, hey, rather than Bob Brown, I'd like to have a nice seascape or something, and we just have the nice, Discover Museum just has a financially phenomenal url there on Jones Street right now. And so those are the kinds of things I think that would probably enhance and make people want to come down and say, hey, you know, let's do that. So, then Laurie, thanks for bringing on kind of a little more descriptive than I had seen originally in some of the proposals. Keep going.
Ms. Waterfield.
I really want to thank the people that got up and spoke in regards to this issue, because you really brought a lot of great ideas that maybe staff or the planning commissioners or us as council members did not, did not bring up. Leonardo Espinoza, I mean, come to these meetings, continue, bring the youth coming in to give us these fresh new ideas to make these things happen. With what Ms. Temora has suggested with the Grossman Project, that's exactly what you were talking about, and she kind of put it into a picture format for you. So, and that's what a lot of the people here were talking about. That part of building something first, I believe a lot of the people will congregate down in that area to be able to come in and do the different activities. You've got the, what Mr. Schaefer was talking about, the Arts Council, and being able to bring in the arts and those type of, I would love to see that bridge filled up with artists and their creations, and I think that would just be something that would be absolutely awesome. We talked about the different components of the Grossman Project, where you had a stage. There was a young lady here that talked about, she was a dancer, and I believe, I don't know if that was Alicia that talked about that, and she really wanted a place to be able to have people express themselves with dance, and that falls into every culture we have in Santa Maria. I don't know what culture doesn't dance, and so that would be such a great way to bring in people to just really explore that part. I really believe that what staff is working on with the streetscapes and with the Caltrans pitching in, when government does help government, this project can be created and it can be done. And thank you, Community Development, for your work. It's, I know it's not finished yet, and we all have a long way to go, but you guys have done a great job so far, and I appreciate everything that you have done, because we've been talking about this for years and years and years. And finally, we get to start putting ink on the paper and pictures on the papers to get it going. So thank you very much, and thank you to the public too, because your input is so very important. Keep coming. Thank you.
Ms. Soonag.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really know that I have anything to add, other than what, you know, we've all already shared. I think I really appreciate your three-pronged approach, activities, partnership, and streetscapes. I think that's a good place to start. It feels like it's doable. I think that, you know, I certainly trust your ability to hear the input that you get from the community and be able to incorporate it as much as you can into your plan. My expectation is, there's a lot going on behind the scenes that we're not privy to, and so, you know, I'm sure that, you know, you're talking to people and taking the information that you have and developing a plan that incorporates that and that, well, we're probably not going to be all privy to the details, that there just has to be some trust back and forth. So we have to trust that you're hearing, you know, the community has to trust that you're hearing. We, as council and planning commission, trust that you're hearing, and then, you know, also then know that there's probably conversations that we're not privy to at this point, because everything's in the development, but that as we move forward, that, you know, we're going to hear from you, and you're going to continue to hear from us and incorporate that. So I just appreciate that. Very excited. It's going to be really hard to be patient, because it's very exciting.
All right, you're finished?
I am, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. I just, I couldn't see you. I'm so glad Caltrans had a transfusion of fertile visions. I, we're all astounded up here that I've worked with Caltrans. I think it's so important with the aesthetics downtown and with what Mrs. Hernandez said about the painting, and if you've seen some of these wild colors that have gone up, Mr. O'Rourke, you might change your mind. I'm not saying they have to be dull browns, but there are other colors. And I just think we just sort of need to sort of control or rein some of that in. But I think when part of that, the dressing, if we're going to do the facades and if we're going to do signage, that what's on the sign on that awning has to be what's inside that building. And so if it's a dress shop, you don't go in and it's, there's aquariums around, or, you know, whatever, it's a pet shop or something. So I think that's really important of keeping the integrity of the downtown. I really thank all the people that were here tonight and all the people that spoke. We've heard about these young people that are living here in San Maria, but tonight they were out here telling us what they wanted done and appreciating what you have done. So, I just, you know, and Mr. Boyson, what you said about things that maybe we don't want downtown and have a matrix, and we did that, I think, probably before you came on the City Council, but I think we need to do that again, so we know exactly what we want downtown and what we don't want downtown. Well, let's see. Do you have enough direction? Have we given you enough direction where you? I think so. Can we go forward from here? Any other comments? Mr. Andrade.
Yes, I think the list, and I omitted that, unfortunately, it's getting late for me, and at any rate, I think that list is important to include, because they're, because those kinds of things that are on that list really change the flavor of the city. Even though there are tattoo parlors that some folks frequent, I don't have any tattoos, but I do have children that have tattoos, and I recognize that. But I don't think we ought to have a tattoo parlor across the street from City Hall. It just, that bothers me. And so I think we ought to have that list, and that list ought to be discussed, but we ought to have a list of certain things that we do not, I don't think we ought to have adult entertainment across from City Hall. I think those kinds of things, I think, we can all agree on. So I think the list is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay. And if I could just clarify, I wanted to clarify my comment. My comment was, the matrix should probably be something of different areas of the downtown area, of allowing certain, I mean, maybe a tattoo parlor would be allowed in some areas of downtown, but I agree with Mr. Andrade, we probably don't want that right at the corner of Broadway and Main as being the focal point. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear when I discussed...
Well, there's no one here to advocate for tattoo parlors, so.
When I was advocating for a matrix, the matrix would be different areas.
At this time, I would like to adjourn the joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission and take a five-minute break. Only five minutes. To reconvene the meeting, the regular meeting of the City Council, our next item will be a report by the City Manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. Your next City Council meeting will not be two weeks from this evening. We are counseling, by way of the consent agenda, earlier this evening, we counseled the September 1st meeting for a lack of business items. And we will be having the next City Council meeting, being another joint City Council meeting. This will be with the Block Grant Advisory Committee in this same room. It'll be three weeks and two days from today, which would be on September the 10th, which is a Thursday, starting at 5:30 in the afternoon. The next City Council meeting after that will be a month from today, which would be on September the 15th. We'll go back to the regular schedule after that. So that concludes my staff report.
Okay, reports from the Council. Our reports. You want to start with you, Ms. Soonag?
Okay.
You ready?
Thank you, Mayor. I represented, you, Mayor, at the Community Coalition's 50th anniversary celebration of the signing of the Voters' Bill of Rights here on at Lava Migno Plaza. It was a nice group of people that attended. I met with representatives from the oil industry. I volunteered at former fighter fire Dennis Shapansky's fundraising barbecue. I don't know if the chief's still here, but yeah, there you are. Chief Orr was still there. It was a really great turnout. It was in Los Alamos, and a lot of people came out to really pay it forward, as we know Dennis has done lots in this community over the years to support lots of causes. And so it was nice to see people come out en masse to support him as he battles cancer. I attended the Serve Santa Maria's new program. They have a new mentorship program with Allen Hancock College and CET, and we had a meeting, and I think we had about 30 possible mentors show up, so that was really exciting. Altus of the Golan Valley invited me to be a part of their third annual fashion show fundraiser. So Teresa Rayburn and I started our stuff on the runway on behalf of the city. And then I attended the Chamber Awards Dinner, and it was just a really nice event, and I really appreciated the strawberry-covered cheesecake. And I hear Mayor Patino from Mr. Morris that that was a suggestion you made when you first came to San Maria. Not that I don't like the ice cream cups that we usually get, but the strawberry cups. Not that I don't like the ice cream cups that we usually get, but the strawberry-covered cheesecake was really good.
Now I know who blew it. It was her. I wanted my chocolate.
Let's get some order here. And then, of course, I met with the staff regarding the downtown-specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield.
Okay. I attended the press conference at the Police Department in regards to Marilyn Harris, or Marilyn Ferris's press conference with Chief Martin and other city staff members. I attended the fireman badge pinning, which was absolutely excellent. Also, the Chamber of Commerce annual dinner event, met with representatives from the oil industry. I did, I made welcome comments to the Optimistic Club that was here on Saturday, and they were just a hoot. They were just so up and happy, they were so optimistic. And attended Music in the Park this last Sunday, and that was an exceptional event. A lot of people there, a lot of people gather, give them a reason, good music, and bring your own tents, and Alex, excellent, excellent job. That was fantastic. I have a question for you. In regards to placing the band, is, and this is just out there, have you ever thought of doing it in the basin to where the sides create kind of like a rise, an amphitheater-type rise for people to sit on the side?
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I was, as I was, you know, looking at the band and watching the people, I thought, wow, that would be kind of cool to see all that place just kind of go out there.
No, actually, we can take a look at that and see if that's something we can do. The stage, getting it down, there may be the issue. We can look at that.
I suggested that about two years ago, and that's what they told me. Well, at least that was the excuse they gave me.
Well, in that case, it'll probably be the same excuse, but I'll look into it. We'll talk to the engineering.
But I believed it, so.
We'll talk to the engineers over at Utilities and see if there's a way to make that happen.
Try that.
Okay.
I was just going to say that, you know, the proximity to the restroom seems to be very influential for certain segments of the community. So moving it further away is going to possibly, unless you're bringing in porta-potties, going to be a concern.
We can try a different configuration.
Okay.
Robert. Mr. Orok, your turn.
Well, just went to several of the functions, and I just want to say again, the concert in the park, you can't imagine the families and the kids, because it's a great venue over there at Rotary Park. You've got the basketball courts and the great children's playgrounds, and plenty of restrooms and all the things. And I'll tell you, there was so much dancing, and the kids were running and doing their things. It was extremely, extremely enjoyable to see that many families in our community coming and.
And everyone behaved.
Everyone had a good time and just came together. Got to say that. Okay. Oh, and I did talk to the pessimistic club this week, so I'll just let you know.
Mr. Boyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any reportable items, but I would like to just congratulate our former Director of Utilities, Rick Sweet, for receiving the Robert Rogan Award at the Chamber function, as well as congratulating Andy Murray as the incoming Chair for the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Well, I've been gone for some time, and, but this past weekend, I did go to the Optimus International, and at noon, I wasn't sure if someone had gone in my stead because I was gone, but anyway. And then that evening, I attended the Altrusa Dog Show and Dinner. On Sunday, I went to the Concert in the Park. And again, this is Santa Maria, this is, everyone is there, they're having a great time, and all age groups, they're barbecuing, people bring food. It's such a great event, and it's very relaxing. This morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show, went to Rotary, I went to Windset Farms for their solar energy ribbon cutting, and that was it. I've just, like I said, I've been gone, I haven't done much. My remarks I wanted to make was, "A definition of a sanctuary city is a designation given to a city that follows certain procedures that shelters illegal immigrants and/or is willing to protect illegal immigrants from deportation by refusing to comply with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Detainers or otherwise impede open communication with federal immigration agents. These procedures can be by law or they can be by action. The term is most commonly used for cities that do not permit municipal funds or resources to be applied in supporting enforcement of federal immigration laws. These cities normally do not permit police or municipal employees to inquire about one's immigration status." And again, I'd like to state that Santa Maria is not a sanctuary city. And ladies and gentlemen, good night.